We can now call to order the regular meeting of the Fairfax Town Council on December 1st. And if we have a motion for approval of the agenda, an affidavit of posting, or any possible suggested changes to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Michelle, would you take a roll call on that, please?
Yes, I would. Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
And Mayor Ackerman.
Yes.
If she passes.
Okay. Oh, and did we need to do another roll call for the council members for this meeting? Or we did one for the interview.
I think it's okay. You're all council members are present.
Yes. Okay. So we have had two closed, three closed sessions, the last one tonight, November 18th and November 23rd, and then tonight with regard to personnel issues, appointment of selection and appointment of a town manager. That's an ongoing question which the council has put a lot of time into. Okay. Would anyone like to read the land acknowledgement tonight? I can read.
I'll do it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Mewoc people of present day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors past present in emerging. Thank you.
Thank you. And the meeting protocol, which I understand was decided quite a while ago that we will read it at the meetings. So I'll do so. The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and are ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or other members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and sensibility. And we'll review the agenda at around 10:00 PM and again at 11:30 PM if we are still going that late to decide where we can go with possibly continuing items. Okay, we have a number of announcements tonight, and I will start out with the ones that are printed on the agenda. The Holiday Craft Fair and wreath making are combined this year, and that's Saturday, December 11th, from 11:00 to 5:00 at the Pavilion. There are vacancies on some boards and commissions, and you can contact our town clerk, Michelle Gardner, with regard to them. You'd be welcome to apply. There's a new committee, the Community Emergency Preparedness Committee. And there are vacancies on the Climate Action Committee. There's one vacancy on the Parks and Recreation Commission, two vacancies on the Volunteer Board, and there is now no longer a vacancy on the Open Space Committee because we appointed Jeff Bolt to that just before this meeting. So welcome, Jeff. The Fairfax Food Pantry continues to solidly operate Saturdays, 8:00 to 10:00 AM at the Fairfax Community Church on Sir Francis Street. And I believe Vice Mayor Hellman and Councilmember Goddard have announcements to add as well.
Yes, some of you may have seen in the town newsletter this past Monday that the Police Department Chief Rico Tavarranz, I believe, is on with us. They are relaunching the Coffee with a Cop program. And so the date for that, for the first meeting, if you will, or gathering, is at the Coffee Roastery next Wednesday afternoon from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. And I think the plan is to do that quarterly, if not more frequently, but we'll certainly announce the next date for that. And Chief, I don't know if you had any other comments to add there, but I'm certainly planning to be there, and it will be tea with the potential mayor and coffee with the cop.
Nothing really much to add to that, but we're excited to run the program again, and we're excited to have a coffee with the community. Welcome all of you to also come if you're available. And we're just looking for a good time and good communication. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, too.
And I will just add that tomorrow night, there will be a celebration of Hanukkah. This is first ever in the Fairfax Parkade. This is sponsored by the Fairfax Volunteers, hosted by the town, and we would invite everyone at 5:30 to come down. The fifth night of Hanukkah, we'll be lighting the menorah, there'll be latkes, there'll be donuts, there'll be songs. And please feel free to donate, and all of the donations will go directly to the San Francisco Marine Food Bank. So come on down and celebrate the light. It's something that we could all use. So I hope to see you there tomorrow night, December 2nd, at 5:30. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I add one more thing?
Yes, please.
I just wanted, for folks that are present and folks that are listening in on television or recordings, if you didn't make it to the community workshop on the housing element, which took place on November 20th, we now have the recording of that workshop up on our website. And it's going to be super informative for bringing you up to speed on the whole process, and just wanted to make sure that the public was aware that that resource is now made available online. And FairfaxSpeaks.com is also where you can go to learn more about the housing element process as well.
Thank you. And yeah, okay, so if that's all the announcements, the first item on tonight's agenda will be the reorganization of the Town Council with regard to selecting a mayor and vice mayor. So I believe we have a staff report to begin that. Michelle?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually have a PowerPoint to share with you. And I'm going to do that now. And so each year, you select a new mayor and vice mayor in December. A lot of the public don't realize that the Town Council all share the position of mayor. They just rotate it through, you know, the years. So everybody gets a chance to serve. So the rotation happens every December, and that follows the November election, although we didn't have a November election this year. And as I said, the objective is to provide the opportunity for each of you to have a chance to serve as mayor or vice mayor. So how does the council choose the new mayor? It's not an election, and it's not an appointment. It's a selection. So you can select any one of the five of you. No set rule. You have complete discretion. But the past practice has been that the council generally selects the vice mayor to become the mayor. And the next slide is how to choose the next vice mayor. And again, there's no set rule. The council usually selects the newest council member who has served at least a year. In other words, if someone was elected in November, they're not going to serve as vice mayor starting in December. If there is no new council member, then the council member who was mayor the longest time ago is the one who would generally be selected to serve again. And the way the process goes tonight is that after you go out for public comment, it'll come back to the council to discuss who they would like to select, if they want to follow past practice or do something new. And someone will make a motion. Eventually, there will be a second, and hopefully it passes. And once it does, the motion takes effect immediately. And whoever is selected for mayor and vice mayor will immediately be seated, as we call it. The gavel passes, and that's that. Just a little information for you. The current council, currently, as you know, Mayor Ackerman is the mayor and Vice Mayor Hellman is the vice mayor. Before that, in 2020, was Councilmember Goddard. And before Councilmember Goddard, Councilmember Kohler served as mayor in 2019. And our newest member is Councilmember Cutrano, who was elected just over a year ago in November of 2020. So do you have any questions about the process? Okay, well, with that, I suggest we go out to the public.
Thank you. Yes, and if we can go ahead and receive public comment on this.
Okay, and if anyone has a comment at this time, it would be good to raise your hand. I see one hand, and it's Deborah Benson. I'm not sure if it's from the prior meeting. Let's see, that works. Deborah, you're unmuted now. Did you want to make a comment? I see that you need to unmute yourself if you do. Or lower your hand. Okay.
We're not hearing anything.
Michelle, hi, everybody.
There you are, hi.
Hi, sorry about that. It was from the prior meeting. I wanted to offer my support of Jeff Bolt as a really fair-minded individual, so that's that. Thank you.
Okay, and I see another hand up. Richard Applebaum, you are unmuted now.
Thank you. Just one citizen commenting, would like to see us follow the protocol we've had for the last number of years. I'm really excited, hopefully, to see Councilmember Hellman and Councilmember Cutrano move forwards in our process. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
And the next speaker is Jess. You're unmuted now.
Hi, I just wanted to chime in. I agree with what Richard Applebaum just shared, and I'm looking forward to seeing Councilmember Hellman as mayor and Councilmember Cutrano as vice mayor, and think that they have so much to offer our town and really thankful for all the work that they are doing. Thanks.
I see no more raised hands.
Okay.
Oh, actually, I see one.
Okay.
Sorry. Mark Bell, you're unmuted. Yes, you're unmuted now.
Thanks, Michelle. Normally, since we all know that it's the revolving chair, and really, the business of the town is what's been the foremost. It hasn't really been that big of a deal. However, I think with the recent activities of this Town Council, I think that the focus of this Town Council has been gone awry, and I don't see any change happening if we follow protocol. I think we need to deal with the business of the town, the actual business of the town, and not this very limited scope that a lot of time, effort, and money has been spent on. And while I disagree with a lot of things that Councilmember Kohler has done, I really think that she's the most even-handed person on this council. Because, you know, the way this has been running, what next? Are we going to change the name of the town of Fairfax? Because that's how I see it going. And except for this, to stop this, I think we need somebody who listens to everyone, who does her homework, who does due diligence, and I recommend Barbara Kohler. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mark.
The next speaker is Naomi Alessandra. You're unmuted now.
Hi, council. Sorry for the echo. I'm in a very echoey room right now. I just wanted to chime in and offer my support to Vice Mayor Hellman in moving forward into the mayoral position and for Councilmember Cutrano to move into the vice mayor position. I think they've both done a stellar job thus far and look forward to seeing more. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Joe McGary. You're unmuted now.
Thank you, Michelle. Yeah, I too would just like to echo the thoughts of a lot of the previous speakers and in my support of Vice Mayor Hellman in stepping into the role of mayor and Councilmember Cutrano stepping into the role of vice mayor. And I also want to take a moment to acknowledge Mayor Ackerman, and though we don't always see eye to eye on a lot of things, I think what you took part in in the last year, particularly with your work at the RESJ, it was you being a white male, middle-aged white male, who traditionally and currently, we hold a lot of power. And to see you step into that work and be uncomfortable and to grow, I think, was important for this town, and it was important for me. So thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
I don't see any more raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll bring it back to council.
So I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to. If I could, well, if we could do it in any order, but I have a very brief statement. I appreciate
Okay, go ahead.
Your indulgence, and it will be brief. But I just wanted to say that I'm honored to have had the opportunity to serve as your mayor, and I thank our citizens for putting their trust in me. And I also wish to expect my profound gratitude for the opportunity to work with this council. We don't always agree on the details, but we always know that we're on the same team with a deep and shared dedication to serving our town and the larger society beyond. And our amazing staff, my deepest gratitude and appreciation for the steady, calm, and excellent work you all do in support of the town and of our council. I feel so fortunate to be surrounded by such kind, capable, and calm people. In a meeting we had this week with, that involved some other council members from neighboring towns and cities, we spoke of how being a council member of a small town isn't what it used to be. Indeed, the world isn't what it used to be. We face a rapidly changing climate and a suffering natural world. And we're growing into a realization that economic inequality and inequity of all kinds threaten the future of our society and offend our morals as decent human beings. A global pandemic, meanwhile, has offended our lives. So I'm really proud of Fairfax's leadership in confronting these issues. And we know that change is not easy, but it's necessary. The status quo can't continue, and it isn't continuing. We're in a period of rapid change. But we'll navigate the opportunities and the sacrifices, the losses and the learnings as a connected and amazing community with love and with grace and with music. So again, thank you all. And that's all I had to say. I will happily entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion, but I also, I would very much like to thank you, Bruce. I think you are one of the most kind and open-minded people there and really just an all-around wonderful person. So I'm honored to have served with you, and I hope that after I make this motion and we make the vote, that we can spend a few minutes just doing that. We usually have a little party.
We do have something. We do have something planned, so.
All right, we'll do that. Anyway, I'd like to make the motion, and I'll do both at once, if that's all right. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Vice Mayor Hellman to be mayor, and I'd like to make the motion to Councilmember Cutrano be vice mayor.
I get to second both times. I wouldn't see the motion, but Barbara always beats me to it. So wholeheartedly, I second that motion.
Thank you. So if we can take a roll call vote on that motion, please.
All right, I was muted. Councilmember Cutrano?
Yes.
Okay, good. Councilmember Kohler?
Yes.
Councilmember Goddard?
Absolutely, yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman?
Yes.
Okay, good. No one's rejecting anything. And Mayor Ackerman?
Yes, and thank you for your service.
So Bruce, we have arranged for someone special to hand deliver a plaque to you, and I hope your wife Diane is nearby to hand deliver that to you.
Oh.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you so much.
Amen. Well, this is Diane.
Hi there. Thank you so much.
Kind of wonky, so it's kind of hard to tell where you're on.
I'll go. I'll go ahead and read the inscription. I took the liberty of selecting Dr. Jane Goodall, a quote from her, which is inscribed, "What you do makes a difference, and you have to decide what kind of difference you want to make." And Bruce, I can, from the short couple of years I've worked with you, I can tell you with certainty you have made a difference in this town. You've made a difference to me, in my life, and I very much enjoy working with you on climate action. And we went through a lot together on racial equity, social justice committee, and you just handle, you handle everything with grace and fortitude, and I have the utmost respect for you, and thank you for all that you did.
Thank you. Thank you. Much appreciated. It's on the screen. Thank you. Thank you all. And I have here a gavel, which I will virtually pass on to Stephanie. Welcome, and I will step down from sharing.
Yeah, just a couple of words. Bruce, you you put so much heart and soul into what you do, and you do it quietly and steadfastly. And I know when you're nervous, and yet you just come out with so much ability to hold a space that people can actually can actually think in. And so that allows us, I think, to make better decisions. I appreciated you, you holding that space for us this year. Second year going into Zoom, which is really difficult. Your humanity shown through the screen, through your little square, and you set a tone that I think will sustain through the next year. And I learned so much. In fact, I feel so calm right now. I'm not sure how we're going to go into a council meeting. But thank you. I thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything you've given to the town and for all your hard work. Thank you.
I can go next. Just a few quick words. Bruce, you're the best Zoom mayor in the whole world. No, I'm just kidding, but you're fantastic. Thank you so much. It's crazy. You were mayor like on Zoom the entire year. And I agree with Councilmember Goddard, just absolutely incredible poise and just the ability to, yeah, bring a good atmosphere, even though we're all away from each other. And I note in your statement, you brought up calmness quite a bit. And I think that is, you know, with all of the reckoning that we've been doing over the last year on so many different things, I think that is the right presence to bring. And so I'm so grateful that you were the mayor through this really difficult second year of the pandemic and all the new abnormal that this is. And I also just wanted to add one last thing. I'm really excited to continue to work with you. And I have always just admired the way you approach the work that we do here, which is something that I want to carry with me elsewhere in my life and something I think we have lost in, to a great degree in general, which is just carrying, carrying that sense of wonder. I think you've brought that in a lot of spaces where I've gotten to work with you and seeking, you know, commonality and finding a solution. So I look forward to doing those things with you in the years to come. Thank you for your service to the town.
Thank you, Chance.
Okay. So unless there's any further comments, I prepared a statement that I'd like to share. Unless there's any other comments, Barbara, are you, are you good?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm extremely honored and humbled to step into this role, and I'm very excited to. I appreciate this model of this selection of mayor as rotating based on seniority. And in the two years since being elected, I've had the opportunity to observe my colleagues, Councilmembers Goddard and Ackerman in this role, both of whom served their term as mayor with the pervasive challenges of COVID. I have great respect for how they responded and adapted to these unprecedented and very dynamic circumstances with poise and confidence, which I believe went strength to the community at large. Renee, you live and breathe this town, and serving the community and helping people is in your DNA. Bruce, you offer balance, humility, and remind us of our shared desire for harmony. Barbara, your vast knowledge stemming from your career working with and for state agencies, you continually and reliably provide valuable suggestions based on precedent from your deep work experience. Chance, I so appreciate how thoughtfully and methodically you approach difficult and complex topics, and your demonstrated commitment to make this world a better place. I've also gained a tremendous appreciation for the volume of work our town staff, a very small team, supports. It's a testament to their talent and commitment for all they manage week to week. In fact, I just attended a legislative webinar update and learned that there are over 600 new laws coming to California next year, many with positive effects for Fairfax. Our city attorney will synthesize these and offer guidance, and ultimately, it will create additional demands on staff to adopt, communicate, operationalize, et cetera. So we have some very large issues we'll be working on together with the community, and the council will be taking action on. Hiring a new town manager and director of public works is among our top priorities. Selecting strong leaders for these positions is of critical importance, and I know it is the collective commitment of this council to ensure these roles are filled with highly skilled candidates who appreciate the complexities and demands of our town, have the temperament to work with a wide range of voices, and are leaders who recognize we have a steep hill to climb on racial equity in Marin County and in our town. We also want to use our town goal of being carbon neutral by 2030 to serve as a North Star and that we communicate this broadly and repeatedly. Fairfax has earned a reputation and legacy for being an environmental and climate policy leader. We intend to apply a climate resiliency lens for our investments in all actions related to infrastructure and planning. There is more we can be doing in this regard. We will develop a five-year strategic plan for the first time. This will serve to provide direction of our town with measurable goals so that we can align resources and funding accordingly. Emergency preparedness and resiliency have never been more important. Councilmember Goddard and Cutrano have developed a strategy for a new committee focused on this, which we expect will be up and running in the coming months. And we are keeping a watchful eye on Omicron, but now that things are opening up, we'd like to explore more program offerings for our older adult population. Mahjong lessons and Ba Chi League are in ideation, and we welcome your input. We will continue to make efforts to bring in the youth voice and prioritize recruiting and appointment of youth members on committees. We recently appointed a young man on our climate action committee. And I believe we have another youth member pending for Park and Rec. Listening to the youth and offering them leadership development opportunities for shaping our future helps everyone. There are revenue opportunities such as the travel occupancy tax for short-term rentals that staff will explore and council will take action on in the coming year. And this is just a short, a short list of our areas of focus. And certainly, the largest issue facing our town in the next year is housing. There have been a series of new housing laws designed to address significant disparities in housing needs and access and to foster compliance with fair housing laws, which are essentially civil rights laws. And these are all lined up in, in advance of the housing element update. The housing element is a component of the required general plan that the state requires we update every eight years. This update is a very complex, multi-phase effort the planning department is leading. The town has been allocated 490 housing units to plan for as part of this effort. We are marching to a project timeline to meet the state mandated deliverable next December. I see it as our job to communicate and engage effectively with the community on this. We recognize the anxiety it creates around traffic congestion and evacuation safety and more. To this, I offer a set of facts to you. One member of our police department lives in Marin County. And most of our fire department live outside the response zone. Our first responders, teachers, and all members of our workforce who travel here every day deserve the opportunity to live in the communities they serve. I'm confident that working in partnership with the creative and intelligent people in our town, we will meet the challenges before us. And on the topic of racial equity, we have lessons learned and wisdom gained. If harm was caused either knowingly or unknowingly through thoughts, words, and actions, let us forgive ourselves and each other. From recent progress we've seen, I am hopeful we compare our community values of inclusivity and compassion with intention and wise action. And in the spirit of healing and supporting equity, I ask our residents what action is manageable for you and that you can commit to. In this regard, I'd like to extend my appreciation of this council for continuing to practice, not just professing our values and choosing courage over comfort. The best part of the job is working together on creating solutions that help our community. I am proud to enjoy a strong relationship with our police chief Tabaranza. And I'm excited about the newly relaunched copy with the cop that I plan to participate in. Please know I am deeply committed to transparency, communication, and engagement. I publish my contact information freely and will meet with you upon request by phone, Zoom, or in person. This community, our staff, and this council inspire me. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve as your mayor. Thank you. So with that, Clerk Michelle, do I open it for public expression, or do we?
Yes, Mayor Helman.
Okay. We will move on to open time for public expression. And members of the public may address the council regarding items that are not on the agenda. Please raise your hand if you would like to make a comment. And if you are calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand. The council is not permitted to take action. And state law strictly limits the right of the council to discuss any un-agendized item. Individuals are limited to three minutes. And if you're in a group, if you represent a group, you're limited to five minutes.
Mayor, would you like me to call on the people, or?
Yes, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, Josephine Bueneagle, you are unmuted now.
Hi, good evening. This is Josephine Bueneagle from Fairfax. I live in the Deer Park neighborhood. And I'm the Fairfax representative on the Marin Commission on Aging. And just have a quick reminder that tomorrow, Thursday, December 2nd, is the monthly Marin Commission on Aging meeting, the first hour of which is an informational presentation. And this month's topic is justice and equity, the issue of importance, an issue of importance to older women. Featured presenters will include Susan, not sure how to say the last name, I apologize, Deemer Marwa, the Director of the California Department of Aging, as well as Ann Wakely, President of the Marin County League of Women Voters. And we'll be hearing and learning about agencies and programs that work directly on the issues of justice and equity for older women, as well as learn about their current work and what still needs to be done, as well as hear about some innovative solutions to issues facing women as they age. So all are welcome to join. I have put in the next door events, the Zoom link and information about this, this meeting. It starts at 10:00, and then there's a business meeting that starts 11:15. And it's also open to the public. So all are welcome to join. That's my comment for today.
Thank you, Josephine.
I do not see any other raised hands for open time from items not on the agenda, except for one raised hand, and that is Mark Bell. You are unmuted now.
Thanks, Michelle. I had some issue with my Zoom. I don't know if anyone else did tonight. There was an update, and for some reason, it didn't seem to kick in as it normally did, though I finally did get it to work. So I don't know if you read the land acknowledgement. But as I've stated in the past, I'm assuming that you did read the land acknowledgement. I find it quite racist. And the innuendo that people hear stole the land from the Miwoks, when most people who live in Fairfax most likely came after the 1880s and themselves were escaping oppression in other places in the world. The other fact, facts that have come up in archaeological digs is that hominids populated North America at least 23,000 years ago. Now, I've guessed if you're an ancient astronaut theorist and you want to believe that the Miwoks just showed up and nothing was here, you have the right to believe that. But I believe that more archaeological evidence will prove that the Miwoks themselves are living on unceded land from various hominids like Neanderthals. And so before you make proclamations like that, I believe that you should make sure you have all the facts. So I would suggest suspending the land acknowledgement until such a time occurs where there's definitive answers that there was no one here before them. And secondly, for a question that has been asked by many people and was never answered by the council, I would say there's some interesting video evidence February 4th. And if you wish, you can tune in at one and a half hours into the presentation, two hours and six minutes, two hours and 14 minutes. And that'll give you a quick idea of what these meetings were about. And you can find that meeting on the Town of Fairfax at youtube.com. That's all I have to say.
The next speaker is Richard Applebaum, and you are unmuted now.
Thank you. I don't believe there's anything on the official agenda tonight regarding the housing stuff. So if I'm incorrect, correct me, and I'll, I'll wait till that comes up. But I wasn't able to, to attend the, the large meeting with the consultants that happened recently. But I have reviewed the video of it. And I've been, you know, I went to the website that has some interactive components and such. And I just wanted to just, you know, I think there was, it was said that there was a total of maybe 40 citizens that, that attended part of that, at least, in a town of 7,500. And I'm really grateful for those 40 that, that were able to be there in real time and anyone else like me who's, who's followed up and looked at it. And, you know, I understand that there's a lot of complicated dynamics. I understand there's new laws. I know there's a lot of people that are concerned about affordability, AKA also diversity, and many other things. I too would, would welcome our firefighters and police and other folks that work and live in town, that don't live in town, you know, to have that type of access. So it's, this is really not anything against that. I just am fundamentally struggling with a number like 490. And it just seems so massive. And I, I don't know exactly what all we can do. But I just feel like the train has left the station. And, and the, the tone of all of these meetings and discussions with the consultants is, you know, how do we make 490 happen? And I'm, it's just struggling with, you know, water, fire, flood, traffic, endless construction coming in and coming out. And so I just, I hope that this topic can continue to, to, to have more discussion and get more of the community aware and involved. And I'm not really asking any of you to take a particular position right now. I just wanted, since it's not on tonight's agenda, I just wanted to highlight this really big deal that's, that's going on for us. And hopefully, there's, there's a way to find something that's reasonable. I don't feel like 490 new units in an eight-year span is reasonable. But I, I don't know what all the, the options are. But there were some interesting comments from some of the folks that did attend that. And I encourage anyone who has a few minutes to find that video and bounce around, particularly the places where citizens were calling in. Thank you.
Next speaker is Deborah Benson, and you're unmuted now, Deborah.
Hello. Thank you for hearing me, council. Thank you, Michelle. Nowhere in the selection of the sites that I've been following for these 495-plus units, or in any of the, I know there's something on the agenda tonight, so I can't speak about it. But nowhere do I see anything being guaranteed to be affordable. It's not being addressed. And, you know, yes, give our firefighters and our teachers a place to live. But I don't see that, that issue really being addressed with any gusto. So I think that needs to happen. So thank you. That's all I have to say.
I see no further speakers. Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Michelle. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. The council may approve the entire consent calendar with one action. Items on the consent calendar may be removed by any town council or staff member for a separate discussion and vote. The opportunity for public comment on consent items will occur prior to the council's vote on the consent calendar. So before we go to public comment, does anyone have any questions for staff? I also want to make mention that, a reminder that there's supplements to the packets on items number eight and 11.
Mayor, I just have one thing.
Okay.
It's not a question for staff. It's item three with council member assignments. Unfortunately, in my haste to put mine together, I had the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority report under the Marin Clean Energy Report and vice versa. So.
So you're making a, a fix on the minutes?
No, it's on my council member report on item.
Oh, okay. Number four.
I just switched the content of those meetings. So when we, if we move forward and approve the consent calendar, I just want to make that.
That's actually item number four.
Oh, well, thank you. I'm sorry. Apparently, I'm just discombobulated.
No problem. Anyone else?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, thanks. I just have one comment, and then I have one question, comment on item number seven. And this is a, I wanted to send a, a huge thank you to our interim Public Works Director, Jonathan Goldman, for putting together this document and giving us such a clear, concise update. It just feels so good to know what's going on out there. And your diligence is deeply, deeply, you know. I, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you. That's going to be your job for me. Thank you, Mayor. But what I really wanted to call out here is the first time ever that I've seen our pavement, pavement management index be questioned and looked more deeply into in that you actually have talked with the consultant about revisiting the pavement conditions, as well as bicycle and pedestrian uses of the pavement and the adjacent sidewalks and other paths of travel used for non-motorized travels. So that's in your report. And I, I really appreciate that you're bringing that up as we look at our prioritization for our pavement management. I think this is going to take us a long way to having a safer and more circulating downtown. My question is on item number 11. And the question is, in the past, when we've looked at our, at our maintenance of the pedestrian trails, we've always made use of the Conservation Corps North Bay. This started, the whole effort started as a Fairfax Volunteers program project. And now I'm seeing that it really has moved into a more kind of professional consultant oriented and contracted out kind of project. So I'm just wondering if there could be a quick comment on how it is we might still be making use of conservation?
Can I answer that, Renee? Because it actually, so we worked with Conservation Corps at my urging some years ago and continue to work with them. Unfortunately, their skills are somewhat limited as to what they can do, and their availability is quite limited. And we ran into issues with that. But you may remember, and this was not in the staff report, that Raul Garcia, who is the president of this company, did our forest terrace steps. And at the time, he did that. He also said he could certainly deliver at a similar or even lower price than the Conservation Corps, and he's very available. He also did the steps, lanes, and paths for Mill Valley. And I got connected to him through Michael St. John, who leads search and rescue, and is a Fairfaxian. So we think we can actually get more accomplished with Mr. Garcia. And I, I, I don't think we'll be incurring additional costs. And if there's an opportunity in the future for North Bay Conservation Corps, I don't think there's a no on that. But I'll tell you, we ran into real problems with their availability because they are used for so much in the county, and they have a very limited number of people. So that was the change. And that came from me as part of the pedestrian trails. And that's why we're going that route.
That's, that's great. You absolutely addressed my concern. Appreciate all the diligence in making those choices.
Okay, I'm looking, I'm not seeing any other hands from the council for questions or comments. I, at the very 11th hour, sent in some comments on the minutes of the joint meeting with Planning Commission on October 6th, or excuse me, on September 22nd. So I would like to continue that item to next month, so we can update it. Till next meeting, that rather.
Madam Mayor, if, if it's just a small change, we might be able to do it, or is it more substantive?
I guess that would be your call, because.
I don't have to make it. It could, it's fine, however you want to do it.
Okay. Well, I, you want me to share? So what the change was, is that we had, we had suggested, or I had suggested that we develop a ad hoc committee for community engagement and communication related to the housing element. And so council member or Vice Mayor Cutrano and I volunteered to do that. And we have been working with the planning department and EMC since then. So I thought that was an important item to catch, capture.
Yes, I think that would be substantive, so we can continue those. So we can continue those when you make the motion at the end.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so do we have any members of the public who would like to comment? I see.
Yes, so now is the time for the public to comment on consent calendar items only?
Yes. Thank you.
Raise your hands. I see Kirsten, you are unmuted now.
Hello, all. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Um, I want to second what Renee Goddard said about the, I guess it's a lot, it's number seven, the 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 pavement's update for the town and some of the improvements that are going to be happening. I'd like to put a pitch in for permeable surfaces. I think our pavement problems in this world have a lot to do with the fact that we're just, you know, we're covering up the earth and not allowing water to drain in ways that it really needs to. So, you know, that's an expensive proposition, but if if there's any way the council can look into costs around permeable surfaces and just more sustainable ways of putting concrete type materials on the ground, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Kirsten.
The next speaker is Frank Egger, and you're unmuted now.
Thank you, Michelle. I'd like to speak on item number five, the virtual meetings. Mill Valley and Marin County are holding hybrid meetings in person or Zoom. With all of the housing and general plan meetings on Zoom, folks at Fairfax cannot attend in person. At Zoom meetings, the public does not see who is speaking and where they are located. I'm wondering, does Fairfax maintain an attendance list for every Zoom meeting? I participate in three to five Zoom meetings a week. There are some with over 200 participants and everyone on that Zoom meeting gets to actually see the speaker and the participants. I talk to folks in town and they say speaking at Zoom meetings is like talking to the wall. I urge you to start virtual meetings in January. It will really benefit our town, our community. Thank you very much.
Are there any other speakers for the consent calendar? I don't see any, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public comment period and bring back for any final comments. And if there aren't any, I will entertain a motion.
I just had one question, Mayor. The question's for for Michelle maybe, but also Adam. I was just wondering to that that comment about hybrid council meetings. I know that other communities haven't joined Mill Valley and the county yet. And with the Omicron concern, who knows how long that will get extended for. But technologically speaking, are we closer? Are we close to having that capability as a town? Or do we have some work that we still need to do in order to shape up the women's center or women's club?
I can answer that if that's okay with Town Manager. I have worked with CMCMTV, who does our broadcasts and who maintains and provides all the equipment in the women's club. And we have recently completed, I believe, although I know they had to get in there again yesterday and I haven't talked to them since then. But I do think we'll be in a good position to start hybrid meetings in the very, very near future. And that would involve a, we've embedded Zoom and and our T, our regular TV cameras. So it can work.
Great, thank you very much.
And I, I think I'm just going to add, and please correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that Mill Valley is actually only offering in-person meetings. So they have not chosen the route of the hybrid. I would like to make a motion to approve consent, continuing item number three to the next meeting. Yeah, so I move consent.
Um, I would make a friendly amendment, and that is two things. Is that with the changes noted in item four and also noting that we have supplements on item eight and 11. And I believe we can approve the minutes for October 6th. It was just the joint meeting that we were continuing.
I wasn't sure if we should separate the item.
Yeah, well, they're separate minutes. So I would say just a friendly amendment would be to say that we're approving October 6th, 2021 minutes only. And I would second that if you accept those friendly amendments.
I absolutely accept them. And I accept your second.
Okay, we have a motion, Goddard, second, Kohler. Michelle, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Goddard.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Cutrano, I'm so sorry. Oh, my gosh, sorry. Okay, I, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
And Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
That's eyes all, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the public hearings. Item number 12, adoption of a resolution amending the general plan to replace the terms community character and neighborhood character with more specific descriptions of the intended meaning of those phrases. So for this item, we'll have a staff report, allow time for the council to ask questions of staff. We'll open the public comment period. And then after a public comment, I'll close the public hearing and we'll discuss and vote on the item. May we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to try to share screen here. Always exciting. And, okay, there we go, thank you. Tonight, we are discussing some proposed amendments to the general plan text to include some equity-related amendments. Options for your council's consideration include adopting the resolution which you have in your packet, which would amend the general plan to replace the word character with more specific descriptions of the intended meaning of the word or phrases and to direct staff to use equity-sensitive terminology in the draft housing element currently under development and for future review of the draft housing element text on this basis when it is presented. And to provide direction to staff to modify, to modify any proposed text amendments and return to the council at its January 19th, 2022 meeting, i- if there are changes that staff would direct. In terms of background, as we know, there is a shameful history of private and public housing discrimination against minorities. In fact, at the Planning Commission meeting, one of the commissioners held up a deed that basically excluded anybody who was not a white Caucasian person from purchasing housing. So this is a legacy even here in town and people might be surprised about that. I would also note that those are almost impossible to get rid of. A citizen, a private citizen of this town, Shelley Hamilton, initiated an effort to replace the word character in the Fairfax general plan with more equity-conscious and specific but non-substantive language. And she put a considerable effort into coming up with those alternative words. And the reason that we consider those non-substantive is it's basically like for like. So not a significant change, just eliminating the word character. This item was scheduled for the October 8th Town Council meeting and subsequently referred to the Planning Commission and heard by them at their meeting on November 18th. The Planning Commission did not recommend text changes. And the primary reason they did that was they felt that the documents or the general plan had been worked on for a number of years by a large number of individuals. And they felt that a more deliberative approach towards changing that document would be appropriate. So it wasn't, I would say, in opposition to it, but simply to take a more measured approach to those changes. As mentioned previously, the proposed text would simply amend portions of the general plan by replacing the word character with more specific but non-substantive descriptions of the intended meaning of the word character or phrases in which the word character is used. And you can see the entirety of that list. And I will, I would also note that your council either, I believe, recently received some corrections provided by Ms. Hamilton. What they amounted to were adding two sections in the current housing element that in looking at the general plan that's listed online, it doesn't reflect the current housing element, that that was adopted in 2012 and then the town subsequently re-adopted its housing element in 2015. So she went back into that housing element and found two phrases, and those are in 28 and 29. If your council would like to see that actual, the proposed text amendments, I can also share a screen on that if you would like. But it's along a similar vein where there's just two mentions of the word character and she's come up with substitute language. Options include adopting the proposed text changes or making modifications to the proposed text amendments and directing staff to return to the council with a final document at your council's January 19th, 2022 meeting.
Ben, just one quick question. We did not receive anything on the changes. And so I think we would have to see those. I don't know who we're supposed to send them, but we didn't receive anything.
Yes, it, staff apologizes for that. Let me stop sharing the screen if I may. This is always so challenging. I'm usually just standing in here talking and somebody's running the projector all the back of the house items.
This is the town clerk. May I add just something on that? I have just sent those supplements and I'm in the process of posting them on our website so the public can see them. And you'll have to refresh if you're looking at the packet right now. But give me three minutes to try and post those. And if the council checks their email, they might see them.
I don't, I would just like to say to Planning Director Berto that I think it's a disservice to the community for us to be looking right now at our email for a supplement. I think we should show that language on the screen.
Yes, and I am doing my best. Let me, let me keep working on this. There we go.
Okay.
Okay, I've got, let me, do you see this yet?
Ben, can I ask a question of the, of the council really quick? I just, with with the fact that this is just getting posted for the public and we're just encountering this information for the first time, does it make sense for the benefit of all of our time to just continue this item?
Well, I would leave that to your council's discretion. I would simply point out that there are four pages of changes that, and all but two of those, your council has seen before. And I can direct your attention to the two changes that were not previously considered. So the public has seen everything, but, let me see. Okay, here we go. At the bottom of the screen now, hopefully everybody can see this. This was included in the current housing element update. So it's a, and it basically, she's recommending that the proposed development shall be of a quality and design appropriate to. And then the the second change is the extent to which the structure conforms to the general architectural character of other structures in the vicinity insofar as the architectural character can be ascertained. So in that, in that situation, it's a clarification where the word character is retained. Everything else is the same. So in staff's opinion, again, given the generally non-substantive nature of of the changes overall, and in particular, these two additive changes, which again reflect the fact that we are now looking at our current housing element. The previous evaluation and recommendation dealt with the housing element that is posted online, but is not actually our current housing element. It was part of the overall general plan that was adopted in 2012. I would also point out that the current housing element is posted online separately. So these two changes are the only changes that the public has not seen.
And if I may, Mayor, just to clarify, of these, these two changes that you are saying have been added, has that language already, already appeared in other parts of the changes that were made to the language? Because most of these are repetitive in taking.
Right.
Seeing any of these words for the first time?
Yes, you are looking at the top of the page. So this HC6, the 2015 housing element update, this, these two phrases, so adding architectural in front of character and then the prior, this 2015 housing element where she's proposing that your council substitute the word design for character. Everything else is simply a clarification of the changes that were previously made. So the public has seen all, you know, there's four pages of it, right? I can scroll up. So all this has been previously provided in your packet, albeit in a somewhat different form, but is is identical to what the recommended changes were.
But when you say architectural design, and we've seen that throughout the document. So it's not as if there's a new word being, being, you know, placed in here that the public or the council hasn't seen before. Most of this is repetitive throughout the amendments.
Right.
So is.
Yes.
Do you understand what I'm asking?
Right. The, the word, the word character where there's been the term architectural added, I'm sure we could find that elsewhere in these proposed changes.
Okay.
And I, I want to just echo what Vice Mayor Cutrano said is that I realize that, you know, I've read through everything else three times. And at first I was concerned because I thought it was going to be massive changes and it wasn't. But I do feel that this has been worked on for months and somehow at the Planning Commission, somebody has to point out that it's the wrong housing element. And now we're seeing it, even though I agree, these are small changes, but there are people in our community who feel really strongly about this. So I have a lot of concerns about, you know, just this issue on the housing element. Maybe there's a way of kind of pulling that piece out and moving forward with the rest potentially. But I think Vice Mayor Hellman, you were going to, I mean, Vice Mayor Cutrano, I'm getting everybody mixed up. You were going to say something.
I, I just had one more question for, for Ben, and I don't, I didn't look if Shelley was here. But the, could you restate those two changes that were not previously in there? Was it one where we're, I just don't know if I misheard you, that we're, there's a, a change that is recommended where there's, it's architectural character? As in like we would be keeping character in that particular circumstance? Was that, did I hear that correctly?
One of the two sentences that are changed, the, the, the second change on, I believe it's page HC6 of the act, the current 2015 housing element update, would add the term architectural in front of the word character. So it would be retaining the word character and adding architectural in in two places in that sentence. So I could read the entire sentence. The extent.
Okay, go ahead.
And I'm, I, I get the sense I'm not, I'm not successfully sharing the screen.
No, you are, you are. I, we see it here. I, I guess I'm just wondering in the, in the first, in the packet that I received, there were, you know, the outstanding, like the, the changes that were recommended saying maybe change architectural character to architectural style or something. So I just, it's another thing where we're constantly hammering on the question of character and yet character remains, albeit with a little more nuance here. But it's one of the things that the, the public has raised concerns about, just the, and the planning commission as well. So I just, I'm trying to. and the planning commission as well. So I just, I'm trying to get clarity on some of that, but I see Shelley has her hand up.
Yeah, I could say this might be a good opportunity with the council's agreement to call on Ms. Hamilton.
Yes, please.
Okay, Shelley, Ms. Hamilton, you are unmuted.
Hello, council, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello. I, just to clarify, again, the only thing that is new in what is before you is to the housing element, the 2015 housing element. That particular new housing element, the 2015 housing element did not have the same kind of references to neighborhood or community character that the prior housing element did. So the only place where the word character was referenced in that element were these two places that Ben has pointed out. If, if the desire, I, when I, because this just happened at the planning commission, as she mentioned, was brought up at the planning commission. The easiest thing was to add the qualification of architectural character. If it's the council's preference to completely get rid of the word character, which I would completely support, and I think you've heard a lot of other people support it as well. You could just say architectural design of the other structures insofar as the architectural design can be ascertained. That would be a very simple, very easy, again, replacing the word character with design. And again, I just reiterate that everything else has been in front of the Res J Committee, the Town Council, the Planning Commission, and is back to you. And that is the only difference.
So can I ask a clarifying question? So I don't know if Shelley's still on. So I heard you say, Shelley, that in the 2015 update, that all of the places where it said character were actually corrected and that these are the remaining spots. Is that, is that true? Did I understand that correctly?
That is true. And that was discussed and pointed out also at the planning commission because some of the planning commission members, I believe it was Cindy Swift, had also looked at the current housing element, had also mentioned that that 2015 revision had actually redacted out most of the mentions of neighborhood character, I believe in an attempt similar to the one that you are doing now. When it was being revised, there was an effort to say, hey, while we're updating our 2015 update, let's change the, start changing the language. And these were the only instances in which the word character remained.
Okay, so we're looking at it right now, right? On the bed screen? Okay, thank you very much, Shelley.
Any other questions for staff or Shelley before we open the public hearing?
Yeah, I have a I have a question.
Please.
I'm not muted, right? So this is a question for Ben from the, the planning commission's recent meeting, which, as you described, there was some feeling that, that maybe this process should be should have a little bit more look at it, a little bit more time to look at it, but I wasn't clear really on the specifics of that. The planning commission, of course, has a very busy year before it and which I appreciate. And so I, I'm torn between letting the planning commission look at it more if they wish to, but at the same time not wanting to throw more work at the planning commission. So I'm wondering, well, was there a thought that the planning commission wanted to look at this themselves? And if so, when would that be? And how could it be fit into the schedule or? You know, because what's before us tonight is the possibility of adopting the changes and then moving on to, to other, to other issues of which we have many.
That's a, a challenging question to answer because your council is, is well aware that the town is facing some major tasks in terms of updating the housing element, which I promise will not include the word character. And that's going to be a very major undertaking, already is, for the town. So I, I believe that their intent was that were it the direction of your town council to pursue this, that there would be some group, hopefully representative group to parse this, these changes and make their own recommendations. I believe one of the, one of the planning commissioners and architect, for example, you know, and this is the challenge, is you start wordsmithing at a public hearing and you know, time goes by. But he was saying, well, instead of using aesthetic, he would recommend the word quality. You know, and those are the type of, of word changes that might add more clarity to what the underlying, oops, excuse me, underlying intent of the changes are while being conscious of not using something that might be imbued with unfortunate historical precedents.
So would you, are you thinking, I'm just trying to figure out what the path forward is for this council and of course, my, my vote anyway, and with regard to that path forward. Would you be thinking of a subcommittee that would be able to do, to go through the do the wordsmithing? I heartily agree that doing a wordsmithing in a large meeting is an insane task and I do not want to be part of such. But nor does the public, I think, want to watch us. But the just how could we proceed? Would there be the possibility that would the planning commission feel more comfortable if there were a joint subcommittee of the planning commission and council or just a subcommittee of the planning commission in order to just move this forward?
Well, I would, I would ask one question first, which was perhaps to get a general consensus of the council that this is a worthy endeavor. And then the second thing I would recommend to make sure that whatever final language is selected has at least one representative of the council concurring with that when it is brought back to the body public. Is, would be to do a subcommittee of the commission and, and, and bring those recommended language back to the planning commission first and then your council. And hopefully this could be a fairly straightforward undertaking, given the, again, pretty innocuous nature of the word changes.
Okay, does anyone have any other questions before we open it up to the public? Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing. Members of the public wishing to comment on this item should raise their hand now or press star nine if you're calling in. Michelle, will you please call in the speakers? I see.
Yes, Mrs. Madam Mayor. Um, the first speaker is Mr. Frank Egger and you're unmuted now.
But thank you, Michelle. Frank Egger meant away. At the last town council meeting, it was said there would be a red line list of the current phrases like village atmosphere or a small town character next to the proposed changes. So folks could really understand what was being changed. But this is a general plan amendment. This is just not some little, we're gonna try it out. This is a general plan amendment. Two Zoom meetings have been held for the public. First of all, the housing proposals for redevelopment allowing three to five story condos and apartments along the great Broadway Senate Boulevard corridor flies in the face of a small town character and a village atmosphere. They are diabolically opposed. I've been coming to Fairfax since the 1940s. Everyone has always considered Fairfax with a small town character and a downtown with, with a village atmosphere. I mean, it's just, it's just a matter of fact, that's what it is. You know, a, a tiny little town with a small downtown up against, up against the base of a Mount Tampa Pius. But you know, the, the public needs to see the red line delete before you actually act. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Richard Applebaum. You're unmuted now.
Thank you. In general, I'm always in favor of precise language over more vague language or language that is subject to interpretation. And I'm equally sensitive to the fact that I believe that some of the attention behind changes of this sort at all are to simply to make sure that we're not holding on to any kind of antiquated code speak or something that could be interpreted as code that in some way might seem discriminatory to any, any individual or group. And, and that, that's great. I too haven't really had an opportunity to see clearly. It's been very confusing. I saw some document a month or more ago and it was very hard to understand what was removed and what was added in. And I don't want to speak for Frank and others, but I do think that there's, there's a concern with part of, part of the community that depending on how the language is addressed, that it could either intentionally or inadvertently be paving the way for some of the things that are going to come around development. And, and I think that there's not so much of resistance to making sure that we're, we're in 2021 and we're not holding on to old Marin things that were, were negative and did not allow for fairness and diversity and equality, but that depending on how specific words are framed. I, you know, as a person who grew up in large metropolitan cities, moved around and has always lived in, you know, million, million population plus, I just casually within my own speak with friends, I said, oh, I live in a small charming town, has a small town ethos. I, you know, that's been my own rhetoric and language just to sort of explain the difference between how I used to live and how I live now. The way it drew me here. And so I, I definitely don't want to be on the side of anything that's holding on to something that's antiquated and is code speak and that would harm any individual or group. But I am also concerned, I believe others are that in, if, you know, we need to see really what these specifics are because there is a concern, I think Frank was talking about. You know, other things that may come in terms of development, things that are allowed, changes to zoning, changes to rules, changings to. And so I think that's, I'm sharing this just to convey my sense of what, of sort of what's happening or at least around with some of the community. Thank you.
The next speaker is Shelley Hamilton. I'm not sure if your hand is raised to speak, but I'm unmuting you.
Yeah, it was. I just wanted to add two more things. One is that you certainly are going to be making further changes to your housing element and other places. You can amend the housing element for, you can amend the general plan four times a year. So you certainly could adopt these non-substantive, non-materially, they don't change land use planning. You could adopt them now if somebody, the planning commission would like to have a subcommittee and come back again with any other revisions. Again, again, you can do this four times a year. So the other point is that your legal counsel at the last town council meeting and again at the planning commission meeting reiterated that these immaterial changes do not change the land use policies or any of the programs. So they do not open up the town to further, to any other regulatory changes that might occur in terms of policies or programs. So any fears that these tax changes somehow open you up and expose the town, I believe your legal counsel has addressed that in the past two meetings as well. That's all.
The next speaker is Mark Bell. Mark, you're unmuted now.
Yes, Ling Shen, I'm going to speak later.
Hello, Ling Shen, I live on Dominga and I wanted to say I heard the, at the planning commission meeting, there were some really good comments, I thought, from the members. And one, one suggestion was instead of changing the, the whole text of the, of the general plan, just to put a disclosure saying clarifying and saying that the word character was not intended to be used as a discriminating being used for, you know, keeping people from whom we want to move here. I'm not sure exactly how to say it, but anyway, I'm sure there's a way to put out a disclosure that would clarify that the sense of the word character was not meant to be used in that way. And that would be sufficient and that would, that would like ease a lot of people's concern that you wouldn't want to change the, all the hard work that these people did, a lot of people did who worked on the on the, the general plan to make sure, to preserve what to them was precious about Fairfax. So it, it seems that that would be a sufficient sufficient amendment to just clarify that this is not to be interpreted as a discriminative discriminating way or something. Anyway, I'm sorry that I'm not very good with English, but anyway, I think you understand what I'm saying. And that's all I had to say, but that might be easier to do it that way and more simple and that way it's just done. And you don't have to change all these other things. Thanks.
The next speaker is Pamela Miggs. You're unmuted now.
Good evening, council. I've attended both meetings. I want to start with saying that making changes in a general plan are not taking, not taken lightly. Or, and I appreciate Shelley's energy, but to vet a change in a general plan, having worked on it for 10 years and then the general plan advisory committee beforehand, it was vetted by the entire town and subgroups for many months. Larry Kennings was a consultant, he was paid. I called him yesterday. I was pretty distraught about this process. I don't feel good about it. It, it doesn't feel Fairfax. I really don't want to get negative, but I almost want to cry. It, it's not bringing in everybody. It doesn't feel inclusive. And if we want to pride ourselves on equity, then this needs to be an inclusive process. And not, you know, just having one community member's ideas. I have many ideas that I would love to offer. But there's no subcommittee, there's no ad hoc committee for the public. So I wanted to be clear about that to begin with. Larry felt that race never came up with character ever. And, and you know, times have changed and I still would like to understand how the two mean that word character throughout the general plan means race equality. I haven't heard that. So I might be missing something and maybe someone could enlighten me. But it's not clear to me. So I'm feeling if I'm unclear, there's got to be a lot of other people in town that feel the same way. And I agree with Richard wholeheartedly, how it's been presented, it's sort of chopped up. You know, it's just not clear on how the changes and what they mean. And, and by the way, I did bring up to create a diversity element separate from the, from the other elements. And you can do that, the law that can let you do that. That way you could really hone in and get really specific on what you want to say about equity. To me, that would be more powerful and it would be more inclusive. And let's see what else. So, and I wanted to say in the planning commission vote, it was a five to one. It was a strong vote, you know, the vote was they did not want these changes. They felt that the town needed to, to be more involved and so anyway, I'm just, I'm, that's kind of where I'm at. I really want to see a positive inspirational outcome and I would love to see more people come to do a diversity element. Yes, you may have to hire a consultant. You could do an advisory committee again, but that's going to be bigger and harder to kind of you've got to create more people and choose them and somebody's got to be there to run the meetings, et cetera. So that's kind of where I'm at.
The next speaker is Jane O'John. And you're unmuted now.
Hi, council members. Jane will be speaking after me. First, I just want to congratulate Mayor Helman and Vice Mayor Caccano on your new positions. I'm a resident of Fairfax and I, I disagree on these changes. I don't think they're not substantive. I don't think they're innocuous. I think they're, basically you're changing a word. You're saying like, oh, the word character, now we're putting this Now we're putting this connotation on it. You can't say it. It's a bad thing. It's like, you know, what, what kind of stuff? It's like first amendment stuff. It's not, it's just not right. Um, I understand that, uh, Ms. Hamilton, uh, you know, this, it's like a mea culpa, you know, like, hey, I don't want to, I prefer not to live in a town where we're making decisions on people's issues. Um, I mean, with all due respect, uh, the hard work that went into it, I understand that. Um, the, the other thing is the change, you know, typically like in the States, when they're making changes to codes or they're codifying something, there's a group of subject matter experts that go through the process. They take public, um, you know, the public speaks and they, they, the public is, they actually, I think they put online questions or, you know, issues that the public have. And I, I think that was kind of, that process was, that really didn't happen. There was a quick thing in the Res J where it came up and it was in the packet. And then that Res J, uh, meeting was canceled. And then in the subsequent meeting, it was discussed, but the packet wasn't there. So just kind of like this mucky, you know, kind of things got mucked up in the process. And I just want to kind of finally say this is that there is, obviously there's a want to change the language. There are people who feel strongly about it. And I think in this day and age, we can't keep on discounting each other. We can't faction off and decide. And then I do want to, I agree with the other speakers. She said that, you know, perhaps there's something like a preamble. You know, the, just something upfront, we don't need to change the language, but we can say, like, these are the things, you know, this was what we intended and we understand that, you know, there are issues with this language, you know, something that can be wordsmithed. That might be a happy medium for everybody and that we could perhaps all agree on that, you know? In a democracy, it's not one side gets all. You have to compromise and maybe that's the compromise we need to take. Thank you. And Jane's here.
Thank you. Um, I, I find this an incredibly interesting moment in time. I've heard people speaking with whom I never agree, uh, but I agree that in the main point of agreement seems to be that we all need to be heard here. Not just certain factions who have an agenda and want to change the tone. Those of us who have, there are so many different opinions. Please don't do this. Don't do this without a sufficient amount of public input. You, you will be giving us a lump of coal for the holiday season instead of a gift. You're at, you're at a moment where you could give a gift to Fairfax. You could give the gift of listening to everyone, not just the small voices who agree with your personal opinions. And on that point, I have to say, I mean, there are what, five of you? And four of you are very much with good reason, uh, biased, uh, to favor Res J. You gave birth to it. You've been members of it. You've supported it. But that doesn't represent the whole town of Fairfax by any means whatsoever. Please listen to the planning commission. They listened to the people who spoke. I'm begging you, please listen to the rest of us. Give us a moment. There's no reason to rush this through at this time. Give it, give it time as the planning commission said. Step back. Let there be time for multiple voices to be heard. As was at the beginning of the, of the general plan, that was, I believe it was a committee of multiple voices. We can't just have a, a little one chorus, uh, group dictating the policy of the town or one person re, rewording our general plan. Please, I'm begging you. I really, there's no reason to do this now. Give it time. Give it a moment. Step back. Listen to people. Let there be time to create a new committee with multiple voices that represent the entire town. Please, that's, I don't know what else to say. This could have a very positive outcome. This is a special moment in time. Instead of furthering, creating animosity, mistrust and, and just terrible things, it could be a time of, of really coming together in the true spirit of Fairfax for all. Thank you. Please, please, please.
The next speaker is Kathy Flores and you're unmuted now. You might have to unmute yourself.
Okay, here we go. Uh, good evening, everyone. Kathy Flores and I'm a resident of Fairfax. What exactly is going on with our town? Why is there so much animosity between everyone about everything? Many of us are quite opinionated and speak out about what is happening in Fairfax. Many years ago, the Democrats and Republicans who disagree on many topics were able to compromise and, and work out issues. Why can't this be done in a town of 7,500? I'm from the city and for those of you, of you who aren't from here, that's San Francisco. My aunt, uncle, grandmother lived in Kentfield and our family of aunts, uncles and cousins would get, would go up to the country every Sunday for dinner. I would go at least every other Saturday to Marin Town and Country Club with my brother and cousins. We enjoyed going up to the country that had a small town village-like feeling that we did not have in the city. Living in the city and going to the country was a breath of fresh air and sunshine. Why would you consider changing the wording in the general plan from community-like character or neighborhood-like character? Exactly what wording are you changing it to? I don't see how changing the wording will be any improvement to the general plan. When everything is seen as racist, it says a lot about how you feel and not about how our community feels. There is so much going on in the world that's spinning your heads around how racist Fairfax, Fairfax is, is truly mind boggling. Please adopt the planning commission's recommendations and please do not change the wording in the general plan. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jess. You're unmuted now.
Hi, council. I just want to respond to some of the comments I've heard tonight. I was at the previous town council meeting on this issue and I was not at the planning meeting. So I may have missed some detail there. Um, I wasn't going to comment, but I feel a deep need to respond to some of the comments I've heard. So first of all, just a little bit about my background that doesn't come up every day. Um, in, um, grad school and my master's thesis was actually all about sense of place and identity and looking at people's responses, both short term and long term and qualitative research on, um, local development in small towns and a lot of thought and, um, went into this exact kind of language. I used it a lot in my master's thesis and it was a lot of the discussion that got had at the time when we were looking at those issues, which was really interesting. Um, and I loved it at the time and I'm sad to say that at that time, none of the people I worked with, mentors, professors, colleagues, other students were able to look at that and say, and, and potentially recognize any racist elements, which there clearly are, or any elements of the fact that we are on land that is not ours, which we clearly are. Um, and so looking at that language, I am not unfamiliar with that language and I'm also aware as somebody who really cares about conservation and cares about the small town we live in. And, you know, I'm also aware that we need to look at the fact that there is serious racist elements in this language. And I find myself really uncomfortable when I hear, I'm physically uncomfortable hearing people make comments such as, why can't we find a happy medium in a compromise by having a preamble or a disclaimer at the beginning of the plan? To say, we didn't really mean it. I would like to ask a person of color how they would feel about saying, we didn't really mean all of that stuff about redlining or saying people of color couldn't live here. So we're just going to put a disclaimer at the top to excuse ourselves as a performative measure. When we know that racism is morally abhorrent and we must do every single thing we can, if we are people who are not of color, if we are white people and if we are people on land that is not ours, no matter how many years you have been here or feel that that gives you ownership, we need to do everything we can to make this right. In terms of the community members, they say they want to see more. I don't see anything wrong with that piece of it of like, oh, we want to understand what language is going where and why. But I think there needs to be some context given, again, to those community members who seem to have no tolerance for the concept that there is racism everywhere and that we need to address this language to make it more equitable and more welcoming to all those going forward. Thanks so much for hearing my comments and I fully support the changes whenever you decide to make them for those reasons.
The next speaker is Joseph Hewlings. You are unmuted now.
Hi, thank you for, um, uh, for having, hearing me. Um, I haven't, I live in Fairfax, but I haven't lived here for nearly as long, I think, as a lot of the people who spoke tonight. Um, but I do care about this issue quite a lot. And I think that words matter. But I think more than words, and I think I, I kind of support, I support the changes that have been proposed in principle. I, I think that they could be perhaps more specific. But I think the bigger issue is that, um, is the actions that, and the kind of material manifestation of the planning policy that we have. And kind of looking beyond the wording of the plan is, is the fact that our town's makeup, um, kind of speaks for itself and is kind of the result of, unintentionally or intentionally exclusionary wording in the, in our planning policy and, um, housing policy, which I think there is an effort to, to correct, which is the right thing. Um, and I, I'm, I know that a lot of people years ago put a lot of effort into the general plan. And I don't think that they, that that was purposefully exclusionary, but I think it has been. And, you know, whether or not we make these particular changes to the wording or not, I think we need to acknowledge that, um, our town's makeup and the fact that no, you know, very little affordable housing has been built for, for decades, um, is, is a problem which has been caused by our planning policy. And that needs to be corrected. The, um, you know, people have been fixating on the 490 or so units in the, in the housing, um, requirements, which are, it's a scary number. But, you know, it's, it's a fact that if, if these had been built over the previous decades, then we wouldn't be looking at, um, the scary numbers that we are. So, um, I, I support these changes, but I think the bigger thing that we should focus on is actually, how do we solve the, um, the lack of diversity in our town by improving the, the actual housing that's built? Thank you.
The next speaker is Deborah Benson and you're unmuted now.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, council for hearing me. Deborah Benson, Cascade Drive, resident of Fairfax. How is it appropriate for one member of the public to decide to redo our whole general plan? You know, I've looked at the general plan over and over again. It was, it was made the original over years and years by a group of people. There's a, there's a happy picture of about 10 people on the, on the first page. Uh, Mayor Ackerman is one of them who spent much effort, many years. I'm sure having disagreements as they went along, coming to consensus, figuring things out. I think it's completely inappropriate for one person in, in, um, in her realization of, of her political view regarding white guilt to take it upon herself. Thank, thanking her anyway for the work that she did to change the wording of this for everyone. And I did attend the planning commission meeting and, um, some of the planning commissioners were in opposition to the changing of the words because they did not agree that the words community character were necessarily racist. There are people who don't agree with that. I mean, there, it's, it's a political opinion and there needs to be discourse about this issue overall. Um, and I think that also the, um, the, I, I, I think that the, there's sort of like a separation of, of church and state here, a separation of powers between the council and the planning commission. The planning commission really is, is the, uh, the appointed authority who deals with the plans and planning and, and for the, uh, council to override the recommendation not to adopt this change in language, I think is disrespectful and it shouldn't happen. Um, I don't think anything's really going to be accomplished by this. I, I think if there are, are, uh, actions in Fairfax that are deemed racist by people, they need to be identified specifically. I don't see that happening. I see allusions being made, but no specifics being drawn. And, and if there are racist actions, they need to be rectified. They need to be remedied. But before something can be fixed, it needs to be identified, not alluded to. So there, there's, there's been no healthy community discourse around these issues. And, and I do know that four out of the five of you are heavily involved in this and, and there seems to be, uh, there seems to be a really big influence of, of the, uh, the defunct Res J committee on, uh, a lot that's going on in our town. So, um, please do involve everyone. Thank you for hearing me.
Next speaker is Mark Bell. You're unmuted now.
Thanks, Michelle. We've been told that this has been a craft, uh, a, a very excellently crafted revision of the general plan. And that all the mistakes have been fixed. Well, if that's the case, I went through about 200 pages of it. You have simple grammatical errors that should, anyone who speaks English should have recognized on pages 43, 51, 95, 99, and 149. Uh, misspellings like screekscape. I mean, somebody should be able to caught that supposedly. This was like, oh, I'm sure all of you have read it. I'm sure town staff has had to go through this. The attorney who, of course, you know, issues with the, sitting in on Res J meetings and allowing the Brown Act to be violated. You know, she went through this. She didn't see these. I think if we're going to talk about an attorney, then we need an independent attorney to take a look at this who specializes in land use. I think maybe we need a linguistic expert to make sure what the words are that are being said. Because you can also go to the syntax, pages 50, 57, 176, 198, make no sense whatsoever. This isn't carefully crafted. This is why I had the previous comment about who should be mayor, because this is the type of absurdity that we've run into. Uh, Ben Burda referred to this deed with a racial covenant. That was from 1925. You can look at the Eichler houses in Terre Linda, where Eichler himself refused to allow any type of racial covenant on any of his developments. How many people of color moved in there? Probably none or virtually none. Why? Because people have other reasons why they moved to a place. If your family's been, for example, in Oakland, your friends are in Oakland, your job is in Oakland. Are you really going to move to Terre Linda? There's cultural and social issues that also occur. Was there redlining? Yeah. But if it continued in Fairfax, then how come the Fong's ended up owning half of downtown? We're talking about a document that's been in effect for what, 20 years or so now? So who hasn't come, who hasn't moved to Fairfax because they've read the general plan and said, I'm not moving here? You don't have a problem as, um, as Deborah Benson was just saying. Identify the problem and then you can deal with it. You're alluding to things in your own minds that are not happening in this town. And if you were to like throw up last minute changes, uh, on the web and go, well, it's the same, just vote on it. Really? This is why you were elected? This is transparency? If that's the case, you should resign. I have more of my time is up.
The next speaker is Tuna Fish. You're unmuted now. You're unmuted now.
Okay. Um, hi, everybody. Hi, council. You know, this whole thing to me just seems ridiculous in the whole Zoom process. The process kind of sucks. It's like, we'll see what outcomes are, but you know, community character, it's like language equity. You know, the word community character going to do to the price of housing. It's like, you want racial equity? It's like, where's the income? Where's the pay? It's like, where is anybody? Where is anybody in Fairfax making more than $20 to $25 an hour in general at any of the businesses that are actually here? Main one being, for example, grocery stores, probably. And how many people working in the businesses in our town can afford to live in our town or buy a house, regardless of what the language is? You know, we got problems. So we got, we got a drought. Then we go from drought season to fire season, or from fire drought season to rain season when we get floods, where we get thankfully, you know, 20 feet of water in Alpine Lake and 10 and can the bigger ones. But, you know, is it racism in our county? Yeah, that's there. But really, probably our biggest problem is consumerism. It's like, what's in our trash cans? It's like, what are we leaving of the air, water, and soil? You know, you want to, if we want to meet any of the numbers for the state, for example, how do we legalize the existing housing that's already here? If we just found a way to have amnesty and legalize what's existing here, we've probably got that many units here already without having to build five story buildings in the corridor. And you know, our population has to live somewhere. It's a problem. I mean, our population, environmentally, our population is going to drop drastically. It has to. There's no way that the environment can support our species the way that we are. And especially, it's like, you know, we go out and buy all this new Christmas stuff and throw in our trash cans a week later. Where's it all coming from? If we really want to give people Christmas presents, maybe we should just, you know, invest in preserving virgin land rather than buying more stuff, which just makes more landfills. Anyway, the language, I just don't get it. You know, language like community character, I think we got bigger problems, potholes, water fires, and other things to take care of. And the main thing is, you know, instead of what's in your wallet, what's in your trash can? Thank you, everybody. And, you know, let's create a world worth living in with like living air, clean water, healthy soil, and interdependent, like diverse communities of life, period, not just humans. Thank you.
The next speaker is Kirsten. You're unmuted now.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I just want to go over some bullet points, just kind of go over the subject in a concise way. And these are some of my opinions and comments. First of all, I agree with having a subcommittee regarding these general plan changes. Healthy community discourse is very important, and I don't feel like this should be, decision should be made in a meeting like like Barbara said tonight, when not even all of the changes were given to the TC before you met up this evening. Secondly, per Shelley's comment, I don't feel these proposed general plan changes are quote unquote immaterial, like she stated. She said this was the opinion of our legal counsel. That is concerning to me. So I'd like to get a second legal opinion from someone other than our current legal counsel, perhaps a lawyer who has general plan experience. I think that's essential. I thirdly agree with Frank and Richard and others that there should be comparative details shown to the public regarding old verbiage in the GP, the general plan versus suggestive changes, and they should be side by side, easily seen. Fourth, I don't remove the words community character from the general plan. I understand the word character is a trigger word, and I think that I just, I don't, I think we need to really look at that a little bit more. I'm not sure. I think that's trivial. Number five, don't remove neighborhood character. Again, the word character. I just, character shows the nature of our town. It's why a lot of us moved here. We liked the character and look of our town, the feel of our town. Number seven, I again think we need a committee to pore over these changes. A committee that is not fully influenced by ResJ. It's just a little bit more diverse where we're not dealing with white guilt it as a kind of springboard to towards changing the general plan. I there was a speaker, Jesse, I believe, who spoke about her thesis, and she had excellent points about racism in general. But as we know, college is about high ideals. It's not about boots on the ground reality. The reality is that developers could possibly fully use all of these high ideals that we have here, the guilt that we have here with with racism, to influence well meaning people to change a document that they can then abuse. I just want that considered. I want, I want it to be seriously considered. And Barbara's comment, and I'm paraphrasing, that it's a disservice to the community not to share this information that Bert was showing us earlier with the public in a clear manner. And to rush this through is very valid and appreciated. I think this should be continued. Thank you so much for listening to my opinions.
Madam Mayor, I see no further speakers. If you want to close the public hearing.
Oh, sorry. I was just thinking about, thinking about the comments. Yes, I'm happy to close the public comment period and bring it back to council for deliberation. Barbara.
Yeah. Well, I want to thank everyone who commented, and I know this is quite a lot to take in. I want to say something first before I give deliberative comments. I am a complete supporter of racial equity and social justice and have been in my personal life, in my business career, and my time on the council. The ResJ committee had some issues. And unfortunately, that has colored some people's view of where we need to go from here. And I have tried to listen to the entire community, not just some folks that were on the ResJ, are on the ResJ, but the broader community, a lot of whom we heard tonight. I completely agree that this process has been clunky. It's had some fits and starts. I know when this started, and I'm probably repeating myself, I was very concerned that we had one person, one person I respect very much, deciding to change the general plan. And when I read through the changes, and I admit for a lot of folks, it may be kind of difficult to see what the changes are. Because you see the changes in red online, and then you have to click on the little note icon to see what the language was taken out. And it might have been better to do an actual red line, even though that changes the pagination. But I also think, you know, the first time we saw it, there were a number of typos that should have been caught had this been worked on for a long time. And then even me, who's incredibly detail oriented, didn't notice that it was the wrong housing element that the comments were on. So to get that tonight is tonight in the middle of the meeting, not even a couple hours before the meeting, is kind of troubling because I think unfortunately, this is all well intentioned. And I want to say again, after reading the changes, they are non substantive. And they're very small changes. But unfortunately, I think we've seen a lot of divisiveness yet again. And that really troubles me. We don't need to be here creating more divisiveness. I think we've started to move forward on some of the past. And you know, I don't, I don't know much about those words, but I don't have disagreement with the changes. I also want to say to people that are talking about creating a general plan committee or subcommittee, the general plan is 2010 through 2030. I don't think we need to start a wholesale look at the general plan with another new ad hoc subcommittee, whatever we call it, to start working through the general plan at this time. I think the question is, what do we do with what I view is really minor changes? I'm not educated enough to know that character has a racist meaning, but I did read Ms. Hamilton's paper, and I understand that there are connotations to that. Even though I believe Ms. Lerner said that she had concerns about a disclaimer, which I believe Ling Shen and also John Ramadas talked about. My thoughts are, it might have been a more eloquent way had we started this. You know, if we had, we had a broader discussion early on to just say that there are certain terms in here that that may pose equity issues, and one of those is character. That might have been a more eloquent way to deal with it. But I'm just listening to everyone who's spoken up. I think it takes a lot to look through that document, which is so many pages, even though there are not that many changes, honestly. And so, you know, I'm not opposed to the changes. I do have concerns, even though it's only two little changes to the current housing element that that was brought to us tonight in the middle of the meeting. And I think it creates more kind of suspicion and uncertainty about these really relatively minor changes. So again, I'm not opposed to them. But I'm just opposed to the process that we went through. And we're going through, and the fact that, again, we're creating more divisiveness. And is there a better way to to keep people together on this rather than then creating factions, which I know all of us care about this community? And we want to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Chance?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Kohler, for your your comments, too. I really appreciated them a lot. I had a quick question first for my colleagues that were the the first two council members on the the ResJ, and maybe Shelley would know the answer to this, too. But what is it? Is it true that this item actually came up through a subcommittee on the ResJ and that there was a subgroup of folks on the ResJ working on this prior to it coming to the full ResJ when Shelley made a presentation? I just wanted to get that clarity because I'm trying to figure out just how long ago this process started in theory.
Ellie came, yes, there is a Town Policy and Economic Program Subcommittee of the ResJ. And Shelley was invited to discuss this opportunity, I believe, at the May meeting. I have an email from Shelley that dates back to April on this. And for the record, this is the sixth public forum where there was opportunity for public input. That subcommittee was not one of them. There was two ResJ, one planning commission, and this is the second town council.
Got it. Thank you. Yeah, that I just wanted to clarify that in my, do you have a clarifying question? I just had more comments.
I can add to Stephanie's responses that it also came around prior to that May meeting in that we made a change of language in an ordinance that we were passing prior to that based on work that I had done with Shelley when she originally presented this actually years ago, in starting to talk about around equity and language and structural racism. So it was already, there was already a a change made, an amendment made that was discussed at a council meeting when we made that ordinance amendment. It was around design downtown paint colors, and we, it was filled with the word character. We had a really, I think, robust discussion about it, and we all came to agreement that that was a good start for the work.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, I think the the reason I'm asking is because in my experience on the volunteer board and in open space committee, there have been numerous opportunities for interested citizens to get engaged either at the committee level or at the subcommittee level with different town commissions and boards. And, you know, folks bring stuff all the time, and it sort of works its way through these committees and then makes its way to town council and then potentially even to the planning commission, depending on the issue. So I just wanted folks to to note that in the public that are wondering how it, how it can be that people make recommendations, and if it's a good idea, it winds up moving its way through through all the different committees and commissions and councils. I wanted to agree with Councilmember Kohler on the recommendations around like new ad hoc committees, new diversity element committee. I really like that idea, and I hope that's incorporated. And I, I plan on being a part of that process to incorporate that in whatever new general plan process we put forward. But I think it's, it's sort of adjacent to the question at hand. And I think the question at hand for me at this moment isn't even about the the racial implications of the word character, or whether or not people are reading that in a racially coded way, or as a dog whistle or something like that. I think through this entire process that's gone for like five plus public meetings, what I've come to realize is that the word character is extremely ambiguous. And it it means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. So I don't even know if the suggestion, which I, again, I appreciate all the public suggestions, the idea around a disclosure at the front end of the general plan, I don't even know if that would cut it, you know, because character was thrown in in so many different ways to accommodate these moments where people didn't know what else to say, so they just said character because it sounds fluffy and nice. And even one of the the final speakers mentioned like that she had, you know, appreciates character in all these different ways, but then went on to say, character shows. And as soon as we need to start saying what character means, it's clear that character is not what we actually intended to use. We actually intended to say a slew of other things. And I think that's essentially what Shelley had attempted to do. I'm disappointed that the planning commission didn't have the time, and I know it's clunky, but to make recommendations, I met with some of the members of the public that have expressed their concern throughout the process. And you stated, you know, I would love to wrestle with or engage with particular sections that don't make sense, or that are, that they don't believe make sense, or that are wonk, like too wonky or too confusing, or don't get to the heart of the issue. And unfortunately, we haven't received that from the public. We've just received sort of time and time again, the sense that like we can't, we shouldn't move this quickly on this. We need to slow this down. But we could have made like three general plan amendments since we started this process. That's how long it's been. So I don't see that it's, we're racing through this process. And I don't see that we're actually getting the constructive feedback that could potentially make this stronger. We're just sort of getting a lot of concern about just the the concept writ writ large, which I'm not finding to be particularly productive. But I I do appreciate the passion. I'm just trying to wrap my head around like, how do we actually deal with the ambiguity that comes from this term that doesn't mean a whole? that comes from this term that doesn't mean a whole lot of anything? And we find that when you have to explain to anybody what we mean when we say "character." So I do, I do think this is a worthy pursuit to, to make these edits. And I don't think that they're material in that they change anything dramatically. I think they're just trying to get to the, the heart of what that particular section meant. And it's, it's clear, the inventory I found to be helpful. It's, I, it's hard to look at that inventory and, and how it's, there's some suggested language, but that's not the actual language that was used in the red line. I, I get why the public might be confused about, here's the inventory of suggested changes. And then here's the red line. And then your comment, Councilmember Kohler, about the comment thing that can be tricky on a PDF file. So I do, I do wish that we had that sort of strikeout language and red language for sure. And I am also, you know, bummed out by the fact that we're getting, even though it's a couple more little things and they're not really material, but getting stuff in the middle of a council meeting is just not, uh, and it's not, I'm not trying to like, uh, you know, bag on any, any particular effort. I get that, like, we're all super stretched, but it, it harms the process almost more than it's already been harmed in the clunkiness of it. But it, it makes it really difficult to act in a transparent way. And I don't, I, it's hard to be accountable to those edits when I haven't really sat with them for, for a moment either. So that's still an outstanding issue, but I, I am supportive of the changes. But I just wanted to give those initial thoughts and happy to wrap around again.
Thank you, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Cuttrano. Any, anyone else? Councilmember Goddard?
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you to my colleagues. I've been listening very, very carefully throughout this evening and throughout all of the meetings, I attended the Planning Commission meeting. And I have to say that everyone's talking about this having been pretty clunky. Clunky to read, clunky where it should have been adjacent red linings, we could see it. Things coming to us at the last minute. What I've seen is a whole lot of delay. And I'm feeling pretty intense about this right now. I, I, there was a, a member of the public who didn't come forward with an agenda or, you know, uh, you know, her personal politics. She came forward as someone who was in that picture that was referred to on the front page of the general plan, having, having been chair of the, of the planning commission at the time when the general plan was adopted, to say, hey, I think we, we overlooked some things. It wasn't our intention to be this way, but there is a remedy. And the remedy is such that it's rather, it lacks substance to the point where we're not, we're not going to face any, any, you know, we're, we're not going to be exposed to things that we weren't exposed to before based on changing this language, hey, this is a win-win. Brought it through the recommendation of the Res J, through multiple committee meetings, council meetings, opportunities for public hearing. And we got to a point tonight where we learned, because I think it was confusing at the planning commission meeting when we were talking about the, the updates to the 2015 housing element. Tonight, what we're looking at is that all of those changes and all of that confusing clunkiness was already incorporated. I hope that the public has, has been able to, to swallow this. It, it's already in there. It's all, it's all there. We're, we're looking at this page that I screenshotted off of, off of Ben Berto's screen share. And we're talking about, you know, a handful of words that have, that exist already in our housing element, as was updated in 2015. None of them are new words. Someone caught it back in 2015 and put it in. And we're looking at the exact same words that already exist in there right now. If I read them off, I don't think anyone could, in a conversation which I welcome, I don't think anyone could, could argue. We couldn't have a intelligent argument about the difference in substance and the substantive, you know, any, any definition of the difference between architectural design and architectural character or physical qualities versus physical character. And I heard someone at the planning commission meeting basically say, well, actually, you know, it makes it more clear, it makes it more specific, it's more descriptive, the changes that are being proposed. So at this point, what I'm hearing is delay. And I'm looking at one page, which has simplified this significantly. I understand the public is very, you know, there's, there's so much emotion around this. But I have absolutely no idea how we could possibly not move forward with something that's been vetted this many times. The idea of a subcommittee to work through this is a delay. Delay is a tactic to avoid change. I don't think the change that could come from any of this is in any way exposing us to, it, it's disingenuous in my mind to connect this to being more vulnerable to, to big development. If we're not able to do this, then I'm not quite sure how we're going to make any substantive changes and walk our talk around our commitment to racial equity and social justice. This is transactional symbolism in many ways. And what we should be doing is taking real action. So if we can't get this done, then I'm afraid I'm feeling, you know, really discouraged about the fact that we have so much hard work to do. We had a menu of options brought to us, real action that we need to take to move toward our goals of being a more inclusive community and chipping away at the structural racist, uh, race, racist policies by which we live. So I would absolutely support moving this forward tonight, supporting the person who I think took up and brought her expertise, not as a consultant or a subject matter expert, but for free, a member of our community who knows what she's talking about and works professionally in this field and offered us the opportunity to hand us something that's pretty easy to do. The clunkiness came because change is clunky. But I would, I would, I would request strongly of my colleagues. And I would also welcome any conversation with any member of the public because I would defend this as not exposing us to anything that's unintended. And delaying it is, is, is causing me a lot of discomfort and sadness, frankly. So thank you.
Councilmember Goddard, thank you. Councilmember Ackerman, do you have any comments?
Well, yeah, there's a, a lot that's been said tonight. I, I really hear the passion in what Councilmember Goddard has said. And it's, I guess I would use the word embarrassing on many levels that this is taking so long and that it's seeming so complicated and so fraught because it's just not, it's very simple. As, as Councilmember Kohler has said, you know, you, you really look at it and you see that these are changes that they clarify what was the intention of those of us, and I was one of them. I chaired the general plan advisory committee for many years. We worked for countless, countless hours on this. I'm sorry that there are still some spelling errors in it, but it was an enormous effort with many, many people involved. As I see it, what, where these language came from goes back in history, I don't know how far because I'm, I don't go back that far in terms of writing general plans. This is the only one that I was honored to be part of. But the, there's, it, we did not know at the time and I feel no guilt whatsoever. In fact, guilt is not, I think, a very useful emotion. But in any case, I don't feel guilty about this general plan. I feel proud of this general plan. It's not a matter that we did something wrong. It's a matter that there was language that came to us from previous general plans, from the history of general plans, just kind of boilerplate language that got used over and over. We actually worked quite a bit on the general plan committee on, and Larry Kennings, our consultant, was, was very helpful in this in trying to make things clearer and less vague. There were so many places where the sort of default language would say really nothing about when something would actually get done or who would actually do it or how it would actually get funded. And he was always pushing us to get rid of this vagueness and say what you mean. And we did that to what extent we could, given the enormity of the task. And there's still a lot more that could be done, of course. Maybe in the next 10 years, there will be another general plan advisory committee. But I don't want to take that on tonight. I think we have a lot more on our plates right now than, than to start opening the whole thing up. But I think these changes are very simple and I wish we could just do them. On the other hand, I, I, it's, I understand that it's a bit hard to read the changes. I read through them, I understood them, but I had to cross-reference, as Barbara said. I don't think that's that complicated to do. I do wish that it was presented, I can imagine presenting it in a clearer way where you'd have an entire paragraph on the left and another paragraph on the right that just says, this is the word that's changed. See, right here, that's all it is, that whole paragraph. So you could see it in context without having to refer to other documents. It would be very simple to do that. That's the only thing I can see that would improve the process would be just to list it out like that so that it's clear. But I don't know whether that's really what the issue is here. I think there are just layers upon layers of issues that we're hearing. I do not think there's any way in which this legally exposes us to anything. This is not developers trying to get us to make changes. That is a far-fetched theory. That's not where this came from. And this is, this is very simple. It's trying to change some language which has a historic meaning that was not our intention, but trying to clarify that language so that our intention is clear. I would be happy to pass it tonight. But I also understand if people feel like getting a couple of the changes late in this meeting and, and having it not totally clear in the document, what the context was is problematic. I would say, go write it out and make it clear and come back again. But if we come back again to do it, it could be on consent. I, I really think this has gone on long enough and we have a lot of other things that we need to do. So I'm, yeah, that's.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Ackerman. So I have a couple of comments, a question for Janet, and then a suggestion for our council as far as how to proceed. So Janet, when we say, or when Director Berto says, "these changes are non-substantive," this is, this is a term we've used throughout this process. Could you please confirm just from a legal standpoint, these changes, these content changes in the general plan housing element have no impact to land use planning or policy? Could you please confirm that for us?
Yes, that's correct. I said it at the last council meeting. I believe I said it at the planning commission meeting. And I'll say it again, these are choices of words and they don't change anything as far as policy is concerned, as far as land use policy is concerned. There's no map change, there's no zone change, there's no density change, there's nothing. These are choice of words and they could originally have been chosen. They weren't. And so now to make a change in wording is completely non-substantive, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. And, and Janet, you have a background in housing and planning, is that correct?
Yes, I do. I've been practicing law, land use specialization for almost 30 years. I was a planner before that. I have a master's in planning. I maintain accreditation with the American Institute of Certified Planners. Land use is my specialty.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I would appreciate the record to reflect a summary of Janet's answers to my questions. So I would agree with everything I heard from my colleagues. Thank you for your thoughtful comments. And as far as process, I would agree, it has been suboptimal for all the reasons noted, primarily stemming from an outdated version of our housing element that's loaded on the website. So I'd really like to see that corrected immediately, regardless of what action we take this evening. And then as far as how to proceed, I see two options. One, as all of the changes, which a red line version has been provided very late, but it is in our inboxes, it is on the website now. That's option A, proceed the whole package with all of the changes to the general plan, including the two changes of the housing element. Option B would be because the two, because the housing element is already being updated and there's a project timeline and there's only two changes to the housing element that are new. The others we have seen. Option B would be to approve everything save the housing element changes. So I welcome input on, on that suggestion, on either of those.
I, I would support that second option because there's, there's another thing that I don't know whether this is a legal consideration, but the housing element that we currently have is certified by HCD and continues to be our housing element until we adopt another one, presumably at the end of 2022. So I don't know whether it, I, I don't, I, I don't know whether it's worth changing or if it might be more complex than we think to change the housing element wording because of that certification. So I think it would be totally reasonable to say, skip those two changes that are in the, in the current housing element. We didn't get them early enough tonight. And also, as I say, the, the fact that that housing element has been certified.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll just say, Mayor, I think you spelling out the two options is great for helping us move forward. I'm, I would kind of prefer option B, but I can go defer to my colleagues. One clarification I want to point out is the correct housing element is on the website. The general plan that what, yes, it is. The general plan that was adopted in 2010 contains previous housing element. But the housing element that was adopted in 2015 is on the website. It's just, you know, because there's a general plan, you don't make a new book. Okay. Thank you.
Well, there should be a link or some language that there's a newer version, something to inform the public. Thank you. Anyone else on the, Councilmember or Vice Mayor Glennon? I'm gonna get it right soon, I promise.
No worries. I'm, I'm technically both, I guess. I, so the only thing I had about the option B is, which is confusing to me, is that, and I almost prefer option A, but the thing that I want to get clear, maybe from Ben, is, and, and I also want to hear kind of from Councilmember Goddard on this because she brought the original language about character in, when we did it for the, the downtown design, painting of buildings thing. And that's when we first started talking about this, when I was on the council. But it seemed that of, of those two changes that we received today, one of them would keep character in there. There would, it would just be architectural character, uh, just from Ben's presentation. And is that the only change in this whole process where we're, we're going to keep character? Because if that's the case, I don't want to go with option A. I would go with like, option A and amend it so we change that language. So it's not architectural character, but it's some, it's whatever else Shelley had mentioned tonight. But if we're gonna go out, if we're gonna get rid of the ambiguity of character, let's just do it all, all throughout the whole thing. But I wanted to hear from Councilmember Goddard on that.
Uh, well, actually, I was going to.
Well, actually, I was going to say the exact same thing. I'm ready to go option A, and I appreciate you laying out two options for us and being so clarifying. But I I would like to get rid of the word character altogether. I think it adds a layer of confusion that's not necessary. I do actually think I spoke with Shelley about that. Unfortunately, getting this late, it didn't give us the opportunity. I'd like to actually ask staff if we wanted to do that now and take out that word and move forward. Is that something that we could do, Janet? We certainly have enough words that we can use there, given that these are not substantive.
Yes, you can make that change now if you'd like.
Is someone ready to make a motion?
I am, but I would ask for the collaborative. Anyway, for someone to help me figure out what's a good word to put in there. Taking away character from architectural.
I think you said design earlier, architectural design.
Okay, well, then I'm ready to, I'm ready to make a motion. So yeah, I would move that we adopt a resolution amending the general plan to include equity-related text amendments specifically replacing throughout the 2010 to 2030 Fairfax general plan, the word character with non-substantive but more specific descriptions of the intended meaning of the word. In the language of the 2015 housing element update, section HC dash six, I would, I would amend the word, the the line that states the extent to which the structure conforms to the general architectural character of other structures. I would amend that to read architectural design of other structures in the vicinity insofar as the architectural character replaced that with design can be ascertained.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion, Goddard. Second, Cutronek, Michelle, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Kohler.
I'll vote yes reluctantly.
Councilmember Ackerman.
I'll vote yes.
Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cutronek.
Yes.
And Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, colleagues.
Okay, moving on to item 13, which has been.
Mayor, please, can we take a five-minute break, please?
Granted. Okay, let's come back at nine forty sharp, please. Okay, are we all back? Let's see, I see that we are all back, okay. So item 13 has been continued to January 19th, 2022. So we'll move on to the regular agenda. Item 14 is a second reading by title only and adoption and ordinance amending chapter eight dot oh eight relating to solid waste recyclables and organic waste to implement Senate Bill 1383 regs, regulations. May we have the staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor Hellman and Vice Mayor Cutronek and members of the council and community. I'm Jonathan Goldman, the interim Public Works Director. I won't belabor this item, it is the second reading. I do want to provide a little bit of background. And for anybody in the audience who isn't aware of what's going on, we're contemplating, the council is contemplating and adopting an ordinance of the town council, amending chapter eight point zero eight of the Fairfax municipal code relating to solid waste recyclables and organic waste. I do want to very briefly acknowledge both Marin Sanitary Service, the town's consultants in this matter, our three consulting group, and also the office of the town attorney, Janet Kulis, and then Joanna Jin for really helping pull all of this together from, from, you know, my perspective. This isn't really my, my item in some ways, I'm kind of a placeholder here, but I want to acknowledge them and encourage members of the council to ask questions of us and then hear public comment. And the recommendation is to wait second reading, read by title only, and adopt the ordinance. Available for questions.
Any questions from the council before we open to public comment?
I had one question, Mayor.
Okay, question, please.
Yeah, I was wondering if Janet might be able to, or I see that Joanna's on here too, might be able to just speak to the, the, the contract that exists now between the town of Fairfax and Marin Sanitary, and whether there's anything in that contract that conflicts with what it is we're adopting in 1383. I see a couple of places where I have some questions about the, the issue that came up last time, which I did get all of my answer, my questions answered, so thank you, around self-hauling in permitted facilities, and whether there's any conflict between what we are now adopting in, in the ordinance and the contract that exists between the town and the, and the waste dollar.
Joanna, would you like to take that question?
Sure, Janet, and thank you, Councilmember Goddard. No, I do not see a conflict with the existing franchise agreement and the existing, and the ordinance before you tonight.
Okay, any further questions from the council before we open the public comment? Okay, I'm opening the public comment on this agenda item. Members of the public wishing to speak on this item, please raise your hand on Zoom now, or if you're calling in, press star nine. Michelle, I don't see any speakers, but we'll give it a couple of seconds.
I don't see any either.
Okay, I'm closing the public comment and bringing this item back to council for a discussion and vote. Any comments from the council related to this, or?
I'm ready to make a motion, Mayor, if we're ready.
Yes.
Okay, I would like to make the motion to waive second reading, read by title only, and adopt an ordinance of the town council of the town of Fairfax, amending chapter eight point zero eight of the Fairfax municipal code relating to solid waste recyclables and organic waste. And that's it.
I would actually, if I may, and I probably should have made this comment prior to you making a motion, but if there's a way we could amend it with friendly suggestion. Because of the fact that the other jurisdictions as part of the franchisers group are not moving forward at this time for multiple different reasons, I'm wondering if we could add something in here with the approval of the second reading that states that by March 1st, we would revisit this to make sure that there aren't any discrepancies between what the other councils and the members of our franchisers group do with their ordinance and what it is that we pass. This would give us an opportunity to review in three months, whereas we wouldn't be having that opportunity to do so should some new information emerge through the other towns and cities processes.
How, why is that part of the motion? Can't we just ask Janet and our legal team to do that?
It puts it on the record in a way that, that allows us to make sure that it comes back.
Well, I think I would just say this. If there are no changes, then why would we bring it back? I think the mayor's suggestion about directing staff to make sure they review what the other cities are doing with theirs and bringing it back if there are changes needed by March, the, the March meeting. Can we just direct staff that way? That's on the record.
And we could do that. I, I would like to call on Janet to just give us what you believe is the best way to frame this in the ordinance or just as a direction to staff on the record.
I, you can change the ordinance any, any time after it becomes effective. I mean, you don't have to set a certain time to look at it. And you can certainly direct us to monitor and see what other jurisdictions are doing. I have had a conversation with the attorneys for Larkspur, the county, and Santa Fel. And, and I don't see any, again, using the word substantive, but I don't see any substantive changes from what they're doing, what they plan on doing, and what we've done. But certainly you can direct us to, to maintain, you know, monitor it. I don't know what their adoption schedule is going to be. But certainly, we're happy to do that. I don't think it needs to be part of the motion. You can certainly just direct us to, to do that, and we'd probably do, be doing it anyway.
Okay, so I won't be amending the, I won't be friendly, friendly amending your motion, but I would like to, I would like to request that staff keep an eye on that, because the others should be moving forward by March 1st as they're required to, without fine.
Okay, so do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, Kohler, a second, Goddard. Michelle, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Member Kohler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cutronek.
Yes, with gratitude to Councilmember Goddard for her vigilance on, on this ordinance.
And Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
Eyes all, thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 15. Adopt urgency ordinance establishing regulations for the land division and development of qualified Senate Bill nine properties.
Yes, and I'm happy to present this item to you. Senate Bill nine passed the legislature and was signed into law by the governor this fall. It takes effect on January 1st. And what it does is requires local agencies to both allow any single-family lot to be split roughly into halves with resulting lots as small as 1,200 square feet and allow up to two single-family dwellings to be developed on each single-family residential lot and do all of that ministerially. In some ways, this is similar to the ADU requirements that were first passed a few years ago. The purpose and intent of this urgency ordinance is to have standards in place that are unique to Fairfax as of January 1st, 22. Without this urgency ordinance, the town has no guidelines in place with which to process an SB nine application, should we receive one. But with the urgency ordinance, we will be better able to address and process any such application. These provisions are not the last word on this topic. We will have other guidelines coming forward next year, just not in time for the January 1st effective date of SB nine. So we do have one correction, rather timely. The last recital on the first page of the ordinance, if you look at it, we would like to strike the phrase threaten the character of existing neighborhoods and. I do apologize for that. But with that, Ben, or my partner Kylie Otto, who you can see on screen here, and I are happy to answer any of your questions. This is an urgency ordinance, remember, it requires a four-fifths vote for passage.
I think we want to point out that we have a supplement that is posted online and has been for a couple of days.
Yes, there is a supplement that contains corrections that Councilmember Kohler found.
Any questions for staff?
I do have some.
Go ahead.
And, and thank you, Barbara, for your careful work. The supplement was very helpful, and I really appreciate the process of, of getting the supplement out so that we don't have to go through those corrections one by one in this meeting. That makes me very happy. As I said earlier, wordsmithing in a meeting is my least favorite thing. So Janet, in, and I'm really trying to figure out what section we're in. In the original packet, not the supplement, it was in item, it was in page 16 of the PDF. It's in section 12. Section, separate conveyance. And there's a section A and section B. I'm going back from there to figure out what that section 12 is a part of, but if you can find it.
I, it's on page 15 of the PDF on the supplement.
No, not the supplement, the original.
Oh, right, but it's section 12, separate conveyance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Separate conveyance. And it's confusing, this, this whole ordinance is a little hard for me to understand because there's a whole, there's sort of two whole sections of it that are almost identical, and one part is about a lot split and the other. I guess if you could clarify what the two, what the reasons is why there's all this language is duplicated. But anyway, my specific question here about separate conveyance, it says in, in section A under 12, it says, within a resulting lot, primary dwelling units on a lot that is created by an urban lot split may not be owned or conveyed separately from each other. But then down in section B, it says, between resulting lots, separate conveyance of the resulting lots is permitted. So that, that lost me, sorry.
Yes, okay, Kylie, would you like to take that question for me?
Can I just ask, what page are we on, on the redline? I can't, there was no page on the other one, so I'm totally confused where we are.
I'm just looking at the page in my PDF reader, it was.
Okay, well, maybe we should let the attorney let us know what page we're on on the redline.
Me, I'll, I'll find it in a second here, I can search for it.
I believe you're on, if you correct me if I'm wrong, on the section you're talking about, you're talking on page nine of 23, separate conveyance within a resulting lot, primary dwelling units on a lot.
Okay, I found it, thank you.
So your question is between subsection I and then II, is that correct?
Well, it's between section B, subsection I, which says that it may not be owned or conveyed separately, and then section B below that, which says separate conveyance is permitted. What, what's the distinction that I'm, there's between, is within a resulting lot and between resulting lots?
Because you can have multiple units within a lot that's been split. And, and so those cannot be owned or conveyed separately from each other. So that's, it's the lots within the lot that's split.
Yes.
Right, ones on the separate lot, uh, member, Councilmember Ackerman, is that if, once you split the lots, they may be separately conveyed, but within the lot, the units may not be separately conveyed.
Okay, all right. Yeah, that's clear. All right. And then I'll just, that's my only real question, I guess. But I, with regard, and again, I very much appreciate Councilmember Kohler's work, but one of the things that was, that was suggested as a change, which I agree with, is that in the original, it referred to our code with regard to outdoor lighting. And I don't think we really have a clear code with regard to outdoor lighting. And so Barbara substituted in there some wording, which I vaguely remember discussing sometime in the past, that wording.
Just to be clear, I haven't substituted in language, I sent comments. But just, just to be clear, I haven't substituted in language. I sent comments that I didn't believe we had night sky standards. So Kylie Otto.
Oh, okay, then.
But in language, I just said, we don't have night sky standards. We should be clear what we're talking about.
Anyway, good point. In, within that language that was substituted, it refers in both the places where the, where this is in there. It refers to two lumens, and that can't be right. Two lumens would be barely visible. Um, like a standard light bulb, the desk lamp is eight hundred lumens. So that must be a mistake. That's it.
Yes, and uh, thank you for pointing that out, and um, that actually, uh, member Ackerman should have been foot candles. Um, and this is a standard that we've used, or not a standard, well, it is a standard. Uh, we have applied to other projects where we're looking for minimal lighting, uh, for things like path lighting. Um, so yes, it's not lumens, it's foot candles.
Ah, okay, lumens might be a better unit because everybody understands, th- these days, light bulbs are actually labeled by lumens. But anyway, yeah, that that explains where the two came from. Good, thank you.
So can I, can I just ask, what is that terminology, Ben? It's foot candles?
Foot candles, yes.
Like the foot?
It's another unit. It's like lumens, but it's a different unit. It's a lun- it's a unit of light intensity.
Okay, so just so you know, that language is in two places in the um, in the ordinance, so we'd need to change that. Okay, thank you for the explanation.
I just quickly looked up, this is Kylie. Um, apparently, one foot candle is equal to ten point seven six lumens. So we could also change it to twenty-two lumens, or change it to two foot candles, whichever the council would prefer.
Um, I would prefer lumens, but twenty-two lumens is also, there's, you can't even buy a light bulb that's twenty-two lumens. The smallest light bulb you could buy if you went to a store would be four hundred and fifty lumens. That's, I don't know, that still seems a little, but that's getting into a lighting discussion, which um, we may not want to get into right now.
It's probably simpler to keep it as um, the two-foot candles, but that's a standard that the city has utilized in the past.
We have applied it to other projects.
Let's do that, then. Are you okay with that, Councilmember Ackerman?
It's, it's okay with me.
Okay, do you have any other questions?
That's it.
Okay, Vice Mayor Cutrano?
Thank you, Mayor. A quick question for Ben and or Janet. And for, just so the public knows too, the we're talking about the the need to create some objective standards prior to uh, SB nine going into effect. And I just wanted to clarify, the this isn't the full gamut of objective development design standards that the town has been working on. That that is yet to be finally approved by the Planning Commission and the council. That'll come early next year or something, and this is just sort of the the first step, just to kind of have something on the books when SB nine goes into effect. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Ben, did you want to say something more about it?
Yes, what we're, what we're hoping to do is to pull out standards that are applicable to duplexes um, and focus on those and get those adopted first. Um, it's a little bit challenging uh, within the context of the the toolbox we're using right now, but that's our intent. Is to, is to work on that, and we've al- already reached out to the consultants that developed that toolkit. So, we're working on it.
And so you'll bring, that'll come back if there is like maybe a regular ordinance or an amendment to this next year. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Goddard? You're on mute, I think.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you. Um, yeah, I wanted to go through a few things, but um, I wanted to start with that whereas that Janet so kindly took note of. Um, there's also a sentence in there that talks about, um, this is on page one in the whereas is, whereas number seven. The approval of the urban lot splits in two units based solely on the town's default standard, okay, it's the third sentence, sorry, unit size, height, setback, among other things, it says that it would threaten the character, we've got that, and negatively impact property values. I I think that we might want to change that word to could. We have no basis for saying that this is, this this uh, would decrease or impact our, negatively impact our property values. Seems simple enough if everyone's in agreement.
We could make that change.
Okay, and then just some questions. I'm looking at the hard copy, so I I'm hoping that there wasn't red line that that I didn't see, but if we go to historic um, or not historic, I don't even have a page number, it's number four. Are you all able to find it? Why am I saying it like that?
Um.
Where it says not historic.
In it, you're in the exhibit.
If you, if you look at the red line, it's uh, the bottom of page of twenty-three.
I I s- I see it, it's, yeah.
Um, anyway, I'm just wondering, so we don't, we don't have our own inventory of historic resources. I know that's been talked about, and the Planning Commission has kind of w- worked with and around that for a while. So when it talks about um, the state historic, the historic resources inventory, that that this may not be within a site that is designated by ordinance as a town or county landmark, so do we have anything like that in place? Any of our i- i- historic site inventory?
No, but part of what we're doing here is saying we may in the future adopt that, and because it's allowed for under state law, we wanted to have that included so that if when we do come up with designated historic resources, they would be subject to this exemption.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. And then if we would go to height restrictions?
What number?
It's, it's C. I'm not sure why I'm not able, I'm not finding my my red line.
Before you said four.
Of twenty-three on the red line at the top.
Thank you, Barbara. Um, so C, and we've got one and two there. So I I would, I'm I'm confused about how this was determined. So, uh, on a lot that is larger than two thousand square feet, no new primary may exceed a single story or sixteen feet in height. Um, but then on a lot that's smaller than two thousand, no new primary may exceed two stories or twenty-two feet in height. I I'm missing something, but it seems as though it's backwards.
It does seem counterintuitive, and this was a topic that we had a lot of discussions about. Um, and and uh, the attorneys can help assist me with this, but the 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 intention is the state has made it very clear that we're not to um, unduly preclude development of units, and so the idea is with our eight hundred square foot standard, um, if you have a lot that's only twelve hundred square feet, it likely would require two stories to to be able to build a duplex, which is one of the things that the state law specifically allows. So the idea is to recognize that, yeah, when you have a a lot below a certain size, you're going to have to allow for the two, for the two stories. Otherwise, um, we can limit it to one.
Okay, that's clear. Thank you very much. And then if, could we go to separate conveyance again? Um, number twelve. Barbara, help me find that.
Uh, hold on.
Thank you.
I'm getting confused myself.
I got it.
What number, what page is it on? It's page nine, I believe.
Yeah.
You guys are amazing. Okay.
Page nine of the red line.
So I'm number two, and so A and then number two. So within a resulting lot, condominium airspace divisions and common interest developments are not permitted. So I don't know what a condominium airspace division is.
Well, I brought that up, and and I said I have no idea what an airspace division is. And um, also, I thought if you're going to have that, um, you would say townhouses too. And so our lawyer Kylie, who can probably speak to this, just, I believe, went to what is more simple, which is their common interest developments that are defined by the Civil Code. Kylie, do you want to speak to that?
No, you did a very nice summary of that, um, Councilmember.
I'm not totally sure what a common interest development is, and I'm wondering, does this have anything to do with cohousing or common spaces or?
Like an H I?
Common interest developments are condominiums, townhomes, innies, and all of those, um, even apartments that there are different ways in which you can convey property. Depending on the way that the structure of the building is done and the way that the basically the sales documents are put together, is whether, what you call it, but all of those fall into the umbrella of common interest development. When you purchase a condominium, for example, in a high-rise, you basically, but you don't buy the walls, you buy the air within those walls. The walls typically are owned by the association in a high-rise development. The ways in which um, they've been creative on trying to establish property rights, but all of those, at the end of the day, fall under common interest developments, and it's a much simpler way. So I appreciate the comment, so we were able to clean that up.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, okay, and one other thing, uh, the unit standards?
What number is it? And then we'll find the page.
Number six, unit standards.
Hold on.
Okay.
Um, wait a minute, I see number six is no impact on protected housing. Oh, no, number ten is unit standards, and that's page five of twenty-three.
Okay. Sorry, that the one and two under quantity had me um, had me confused. Could you explain those, one and two? Two-unit project in the section?
Oh, so the unit, so it's under unit standards, but you're looking at B, unit size, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm looking at, I'm looking at quantity.
A, okay, so A.
So no more than two dwelling units of any kind may be built on a lot that results from an urban lot split.
And that's why they're saying you can go from, if you do a lot split, you can go from one property on a lot to four, because the split lots can each have two dwelling units.
Right, but, okay, but not limited. Okay, but but the part about means any, that unit means any dwelling unit, including but not limited to a primary, okay.
So it could be a unit in ADU, or it could be, I mean, yeah.
Okay, and then it says in the, and it's uh, ADU that it'd be allowed, under the section seventeen point oh four nine, so that just means in our ADU and JDU um, code section, which I could not find in our code, I'll be honest, in my paper code. So I think uh,
Paper.
I apologize. That's because that's the new code that you would be creating under the two-unit project on page five. That's the one um, that would be referenced then again on page fourteen. So it's the new code section you are creating. That's why you couldn't find it in your paper code.
Oh, excellent. Thank you so much for telling me that. Okay, those were my questions. Thank you all very much.
Thanks. Okay, thank you, everyone. The only question I had was back to the um, objective design standards. Uh, Ben, can you um, it did, did I hear January for that? And is there any plans for inclusionary housing standard in that, or what what's happening with inclusionary housing?
Um, inclusionary housing would be separate. You know, the objective design standards, think of things like height limit, um, ob- obviously, our intention is to go further into design aspects.
Right.
Uh, January, January may be a little bit optimistic.
Okay.
Because we're relying on consultants and
Right.
I haven't even heard back from them. I I can tell you that there's interest throughout Marin among all of the jurisdictions and planning agencies to try to mull this over, because obviously, the lot sizes kind of blew up what a lot of agencies were using as their assumptions for doing multiple units on a parcel.
Didn't we also get grant money to actually work on objective development standards?
Yeah, and we've got a draft toolkit, about two hundred and seventy pages. The the challenge is, is boiling it down to something that is strictly applicable to duplexes at this time, is in in avoiding the complexity of dealing with all the different um, housing types is pretty challenging.
Okay.
We're definitely recognizing that as a priority work, work project.
And and could you speak to the inclusionary housing?
Um, inclusionary housing is another collaborative effort. Uh, we're, we're hoping to have that more or less uh, on track with development of the, of the housing element. Um, I I'd like to be able to speak in more detail uh, to that, but I don't, I don't have that information tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, could I ask a question of of your question? Are you referring to um, whether or not like these these lot splits in the dwellings that are on them could be, could have like affordability covenants to be included? Got it.
It's, it's an interesting question and probably uh, would require legal analysis. Um, so I I'll, we will take that under uh, consideration.
Okay, if there are no more questions, we can open it up to public comments.
Okay, uh, the first speaker is Tuna Fish. You're unmuted now.
Hello again, guys. Thank you for trying to protect the character Fairfax. It's all pretty interesting, the state involvement in, you know, somewhat local land use. And I keep coming back to, it's like some people called the Anasazi, as well as other people, that seem to have disappeared for some reason. Might have something to do with water. Might have something to do with something else, I don't know, but anyway, it's worth thinking about the Anasazi. And what are we, you know, COVID, everything else that's happening? It's still bill, 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 bye, 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 and yeah, everybody's got to live somewhere, but what are we actually doing to think about or consider population? Population just keeps on growing on the planet. It's like, there's still an increase in population over people that have died due to COVID and everything else. So we're not dealing with, you know, some of the basic problems, but, so yeah, so we can do mandates and say, you gotta split these lots and allow for this and allow for that for how many people live someplace. But at the same time, what's the like, you know, the character or the characteristics of where we live in terms of hillsides and narrow roads and steepness? And that stuff, that water stuff. Where's the water going to come from? And possibly decel, and there's problems with that too in terms of what to do with the salt and the energy use, and we're not there yet, and you know, a lot of that just makes my head spin and go, whoa. And I know that we can, we can, we can change the world, we really can. It's a matter of will and people being willing to work together. You know, it's population education, and then there's, you know, one size fits all, and you know, thank you for trying to protect Fairburgs and Faksvilleshire. I don't know what's going to happen. It's like, you know, we got fires, but say we split everything, and then we've got twice the traffic and and cars and, you know, a few more slides on the roads and whatnot. And where are these people going to go when there's an evacuation, or where's there even going to be water to put out a fire? You know? And then there's, you know, the question of affordable. It's like, what's, what's affordable, or um, I read something the other day that, you know, hundred thousand dollars a day in Marin is like low income. But, you know, maybe we can change our language, which will, you know, really help for the income somehow, or the jobs that are available here for people to be able to.
You're on your three minutes, is that?
Anyway, um, thank, thank you very much. Good luck, and, you know, where's the water coming from?
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Egger.
Thank you, thank you, Michelle. The direction Fairfax is going is a gift to developers, speculators, and houselifters. Senate Bill Nine does not require any affordable housing, zero. In looking at your ordinance, the first red flag is there is no appeal procedure in this ordinance. The second issue is under historic. Fairfax does not have a historic district as defined by the state resources inventory. There are a number of historic homes and businesses at Fairfax from the late eighteen hundreds and early nineteen hundreds that have no historical designation and will be demolished during redevelopment. Uh, I've got seventeen in italics, lot sizes, twenty-four hundred square feet to subdivide. Many of our hillside lots are straight up and down. I, I'm not sure how you'd subdivide a twenty-five hundred square foot up, straight up and down lot. Number nine in Prince, it talks about lot access. A, it says adjoining public right of way, okay? B, frontage on a public right of way of twenty feet. The current code requires sixty-plus feet of the public right of way. So that's a huge reduction. Uh, looking at K and Prince Utilities. Currently Fairfax approves the second accessory dwelling units of twelve hundred square feet and does not require a water meter or sewer hookup. SB nine allows all of these, all of, of these accessory dwelling units to be subdivided off. What's gonna happen? How are they gonna do that with no water meter and no sewer hookup? I've got noted here, I, I, small I, I. Oh, a unit on a septic tank. You know, in nineteen seventy-four Fairfax passed an ordinance that banned new development on a septic tank. Why are we now abandoning that, that, that ordinance? I mean, does the state law change our local ordinance? So, um, the, um, there, there, there's, there's, there's probably just a few issues here. The, the no right of appeal by any party suffering damages, either side, either the owner or neighbor, is a violation of the public's Fourteenth Amendment rights, equal protection under the law. I would recommend you add an appeal process to this ordinance. Number two, I asked you to add add a D. You've got A, B, and C. I'm asking you add a D. A D would say no dwelling unit may be connected to or allowed to become a timeshare ownership. This would prevent a, a Picasso-type ownership, in effect, timeshares generally with up to eight individual owners of one property. This is happening all over Sonoma County and Napa County. And Fairfax needs to protect itself against, against these Picasso uh, uh, timeshare operations that are, they're coming in, corporates are buying properties and converting them. Number three, require water meters and sewer hookups for all accessory dwelling units. You know, on the issue of insufficient water supply, uh, that, that, that is a real issue here in Marin. You know, and the majority of the town is, is in a wildland urban interface zone. We can't get out of town when an accident shuts down Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. What are we gonna do in a major wildland fire? Number four, legalize, there's about three hundred undocumented second and third units in Fairfax. They're already here. People are, folks are living in them. Let's legalize them. Let's get them on the books. Uh, that would go a long ways in meeting your four hundred ninety, ninety required units. And lastly, I'm urging you to require rent control on all accessory dwelling units. That's the only way we'll get any affordable housing out of Senate Bill Nine. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Michael McIntosh. Michael, you're unmuted now.
Hello, council members. I've been listening to the discussions tonight. And personally, I oppose not SB nine, I oppose SB eight, and I oppose SB ten. And I agree with Frank that the additional density will ruin the character of our town. I feel that'll put us at great risk when there's fire of congestion on our hills. However, the discussion at hand about limiting somebody who has a small lot to subdivide it is also in opposition to your equity discussion. People that have smaller homes and smaller lots are not the big fat wealthy corporations we're all arguing about. They're the poor people and you're precluding their opportunity from subdividing and building their equitable wealth from their property. So I, I hope you guys will look in the mirror from your prior discussions and realize that you're taking away the opportunities of somebody who doesn't have the same financial resources to acquire a big fat property. They have a small property and here's their opportunity to subdivide it, maybe offer it to their family, maybe sell it off and build some comparable wealth that they can invest elsewhere. You're taking that opportunity away when you're talking about these very small lots. That said, I still agree that we should not be subdividing these lots. I do not believe that is good for any town for this additional density, especially in a fire interface and with restrictions of water. But I want you guys to all think about your prior comments about racial equity that's being offered to those people that do not have the same financial resources that you guys might have, may or may not have. Thank you.
The next speaker is Rick Hamer. You're unmuted now, Rick.
Uh, good evening, council. Um, thank you very much for your real hard work doing this, especially our legal team. I realize it's necessary to have this in place before January one. Uh, I fully want to point attention to Mr. Egger's comment about Picasso timeshares. And I think under regulation of use, that needs to be considered to be added as an item in order to prevent that from moving in. And that's why I have to say, thanks again.
I see no more speakers, Madam Mayor. Thank you. I see. What's going on? I see one. I saw two or one. Um, Richard Applebaum, you're unmuted now.
Hi, thanks. Um, I didn't, I don't know exactly what's possible in emergency ordinance and the subjective standard stuff, but I thought that Frank had some really interesting points. And so if this is the appropriate time and place to add some things, get some other qualifications in there. The rent control thing was interesting, the preventing these kind of, you know, outside investors coming in, gobbling up property also sounds really important. The stuff about the, the water and water meters and hookups and such or whatever, so anything we can do that, you know, applies common sense and, you know, is good, good overall. I thought Frank was, had some really good points. Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Jane or John. You're unmuted now. I think. Sorry. Try it again.
There, okay. I, can you hear me? Cool. I just want to say I salute all of you. You are facing such enormous difficult decisions and situations from such disparate opinions coming at you from all directions. This is not an easy time for a variety of reasons, not just the pandemic, but social unrest. It's enormous. There are no simple, easy answers to the problems facing us. I just would continue to urge you to listen to all voices of all the people who have something to say about all the issues. We are all involved. We're in this together. It's not just one group and another group. We need to be able to work together to find solutions. And I thank you for your service. I appreciate the hard work and good night.
Are there any other speakers? I see none, Madam Mayor. Okay, I wanted to just make a point that I allowed Mr. Egger to speak over three minutes because I believe he represents the group, save Fairfax. And so I see a lot of hands and I don't know who is first, so if somebody wants to.
I think they kind of line up on the Zoom thing, so that's, that's, that helps you to figure out who raised their hands.
I, I have it in gallery, so I'm just gonna say, Councilmember Kohler.
Yeah, I think a lot of the things that were suggested are not things. For example, it's a ministerial process, so there is no appeal process to that. There were other things that were suggested that I, I don't think can be done. But the one question I have for our council is on page ten of the Red Line, it talks about regulation of use and we say things like you can't do short-term rentals. I'm just wondering about the issue of timeshare use. Is there, I know there's a lot of preclusions on what can be done under SB nine, but I'm just wondering if there's any possibility of precluding timeshare use to that regulation of use where there is an A, B, and C and the possibility of adding a D. And it may be that we're precluded from doing that. I don't know how you describe timeshares other than the general terms. So could Kylie or Janet respond to that?
Janet, I will answer that. That's okay. So I believe it's already covered. If you look at the separate conveyance, which you've already kind of talked about, it talks about common interest development, but in subsection III.
Could you reply to it? What, what section? Sorry, where's the conveyance?
Sure, I'm on page ten of twenty-one on the Red Line version.
Thank you.
Section twelve.
So it's ten of twenty-three and you're looking at the one that's little I, little I, little I, where it says all the interests in a lot, in all dwellings on a lot shall be held equally and undivided by individual property owners. That means no timeshares?
Correct, because when you own a timeshare, you typically own one fifty-second, so one week or two fifty-second, two weeks. You don't have an undivided interest. You would have only a portional interest. This would mean a typical two owners of a house would have the whole entirety of the house. It's not subdivided in between that. Additionally, when you look down below, they couldn't do it with a short-term rental, so you couldn't say, well, I own it, but I'll let you just use it for a week because that would then be in violation of the short-term rental. So I believe it is covered between those two sections to where there's efficient insurances that we should not be able to get timeshares.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
Any other questions, Councilmember Kohler?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Catrano.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, that was a great response, Kylie. Thank you very much. Um, I had a question about, well, one, one thing was, one of the members of the public mentioned the concerns about private developers coming in and gobbling up and like the speculative nature of things, but I think maybe somebody could speak to the fact that I, I think it's you, an individual has to own it and the person that splits the lot has to live in one of those split lots for at least three years. Is that, that correct?
Yes, if you look on page one of twenty-one, the application can only be done by an individual property owner. And an individual property owner specifically excludes the partnership, corporation, et cetera, so limited liability corporation. Unless it's community land trust, but any corporation, private developer cannot come in. And you also accurately pointed out that there is a three-year requirement for the occupation of the home by one of the property owners.
Thank you very much. Um, yeah, I like that exemption for the community land trusts. The, the thing I had another question about was this question about hookups. I know that there's a, a section that talks about easements and that the, if you do the lot split, there has to be the easements for utilities to provide services, but I just, could you speak to that question? I think Mr. Mr. Egger brought it up about the, the water hookup issue.
Um, well, the town doesn't provide the water hookup. That's Marin Water. And so we have the easements, we have the space for that to, to happen, the requirement for that to happen, but that's not something that is in our jurisdiction.
Got it. But, but it is, yeah, in, in the regs or in the ordinance, there is a, we make space for that, right?
Right.
Yeah. And I would further add that under our subdivision code, these are things that we're going to be going to our town engineer to get into the brass tacks of how we address things like that.
I'd like to also point out that Mr. Egger was correct when he's talking about the constrained nature of some of the single-family lots in Fairfax. The hillsides, there are, there are a lot of constraints to a lot of the lots. And so this isn't going to be possible for every lot. But we can't rely upon the fact that there are a lot of different constraints. Uh, because there could be a lot that where this is possible. And so we're trying to provide some guidelines, some regulations, some control as opposed to not really having any way of addressing that, you know, one in a hundred chance that somebody comes in and has a lot that can be split, can be subdivided.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, I think that's all my questions.
Um, Michelle, I realize I didn't formally close the public comment and I do see a hand raised. I don't know if we missed it before, but, um,
Would you like to hear from that person?
I, I, yeah, considering I didn't formally close it, I think that's the right course.
Okay. Um, yes, Kirsten, you are unmuted now.
I really appreciate that. Thank you so much. I just, um, first of all, you guys are doing a great job just trying to, you know, get ahead of all this before January first. And I just had a few questions about the document under parking. It notes here at least one off-street parking space per unit. The, the lot split shall have unless one of the following applies. And I'm just curious, you know, we don't have a lot of off-street parking, so how does that work? So that's a question. Um, I'm also curious about your car share piece. It says a site, if the site is located within one block of a permanently designated car share vehicle location, there is an exemption and, um, you know, do we need to, do we need, do we have bylaws that show how many car share vehicle locations are allowed? Um, I'm curious also about the part under landscaping where it says any heritage tree removed shall require two thirty-six inch box trees, fire safe. That's great, but I thought we had an ordinance that said heritage cheese trees could not be cut down. So has that changed? Is that? Is it just, you know, does this bill just preclude all of our laws and ordinances? Um, I'm also completely in agreeance about the timeshare concern. I do, I would like to request that your legal counsel consider Frank's opinion about the Fourteenth Amendment. We should have an appeal process and if our legal counsel can look into that and somehow be able to add that to this document, that would be amazing. I thought the idea of rent control was fantastic. This bill does not include any low-income housing as we've, we've spoken of and it's ridiculous and it should. Um, and as far as the AD units, we have so many of them in Fairfax. Is there a way we can forgive their unreported nature and begin to include them? It would go a long way in helping our numbers. I, I don't. I, I don't understand why that hasn't been done, it would be incredibly helpful. And lastly, the historic designation would be another way to protect some of our beautiful, beautiful homes in Fairfax and buildings from being demolished. Thank you for, for bringing me back in, I appreciate it, good luck, everyone.
Madam Mayor, are you reopening the public comment? Here's another hand raised.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Deborah Benson, you're unmuted now.
Thank you, Michelle, thank you, councilmembers, I guess I missed the, the first opportunity. So I, I do notice that other towns are doing such things as requiring these divisions and the, the units within these divisions to have something like what we required Victory Village to do, which was to guarantee affordability on the scale within our county for 55 years. So I would like to see something like that included if possible. Also, the maps, the, the part that talks about not threatening endangered species, the maps are, are not really clear on, on that, I would like to see those clarified a little bit. And I guess, I guess that, and, and I did notice the character business. So I guess that's all I have to say, thank you.
I see no more raised hands, if you want to...
Do I, I'm going to close the public comment and we'll resume the council deliberations. Councilmember Goddard, please.
Yeah, thank you. I did want to ask for clarification on Mr. Egger's comment about the septic. Is there something in here that allows a septic hookup? Is it referred to in here? I didn't see it.
Yes, and I would like to also clarify that the town's ordinances do not outright prohibit septic hookups, we actually had a structure that we approved within the last two years. It, it, there's a provision that if the sanitary district is not willing to extend, or it's some other preclusion is in effect, and there are a number of houses on Upper Cascade that are under those circumstances. So what it says is it has to meet current county standards for septic systems, but that's not an out, that is not an out-and-out prohibition under the current town code.
Okay, and then one other question, and that is, again, Barbara, if you don't mind helping me here, lot location, which is number three, A, and then the little Roman numeral three. So it's lot location, and it basically says, and I can just read it.
Let's just go there, it's page 3 of 23, I'm not that fast.
Page what?
Page 3 of 23 on the Red Line at the very top says lot location.
Thank you, so the lot to be split is not located on a site that has any of the following, and number three under there says within a very high fire hazard severity zone, unless it complies with all that. Can we just clarify that, because that, that will forever be an issue, especially moving forward with everything we're doing around housing? What does a very high fire hazard severity zone mean?
I just want to add something, I sit on the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, and it's my understanding that there are no very high fire threat severity zones that have been designated in Fairfax, most of them are in West Marin, and that is something that's determined by the state, there is a way to attempt to get something designated, but usually they're denied. But Ben is nodding his head, he probably has something to add to that.
Yeah, Mill Valley has some very high fire hazard severity zones, but you are quite correct, Councilmember Kohler, there are no such designated areas within Fairfax.
So I, I mean, I, I think this is going to be something that we need to learn more about as we go forward, because I can't really imagine, but to, to the, to the layperson or to myself, looking at where I live in the Wui, in the Cascades, I, I would, I would venture to ask, what's a higher severity?
So if you look on, if you look on Marin Maps, a lot of where you live and other places in the Cascades are called high fire threat, not very high.
Right.
So, but I, I think we can learn more about it, but as far as doing it tonight, just if you look on Marin Maps under the Wildfire Prevention Authority, those maps are there, and you can see how things are designated in the county.
Okay, well, I would request that we pursue it further, just because I think it's going to be important in informing our, our process with the housing element going forward.
Simply put, Councilmember Goddard, think of chaparral, areas of the county that are chaparral vegetation, which are adapted to fire and basically burn quite regularly, and thank God Fairfax doesn't have that, so.
Ben, can I ask a quick question as a follow-up to this? Sorry, Councilmember Ackerman, but for that particular item, I note in the other sections where we talk about floodplains, we are identifying, you know, FEMA as the agency that, that discusses those things, but with regard to a definition of a very high fire severity zone, should we put CAL FIRE as, you know, as defined by CAL FIRE? I mean, is that the appropriate agency? But to that point, if members of the public are, you know, not, not clear how that gets defined, and they think they live in that kind of area, there are agencies that are, that we are relying on to make those determinations, correct?
That is correct, and yes, to my knowledge, that is, it's certainly a state designation, and I do believe it is a CAL FIRE originated designation.
You're on mute, Councilmember Kohler.
At this point, I'm not sure that we should specifically state CAL FIRE, because I'm not sure that that is the state agency that designates it. To put that in tonight, I don't think is a good idea, but I think we should get further clarification on that, as Councilmember Goddard asked.
Renee, do you have any more comments or questions?
All set, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Ackerman?
Actually, I think all of my comments have been addressed, so thank you. The no timeshare, that was a great answer, thank you Kylie for that. And, yeah, yeah, I think, I think I'm good with it, and just keeping in mind that this is an urgency ordinance, and it would be, the whole point of this is really to get this passed now, but it can be improved and will be improved as we go forward, so I'm, I'm in support of it as it is, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I would just, Janet, could you weigh in on the parking question? So if you're, how, how do you substantiate, or, you know, if you apply for this, do you have to, how do you prove that you have street parking available?
Kylie, is that, Kylie and Ben, maybe you could address that better than I can?
I can address that, actually, that is state, strictly from the state statute, there doesn't need, the state has, in its infinite wisdom, just simply said that we have to have, we can require up to one space per unit, and we can't impose any additional parking requirements with the exception of, not even the parking requirements, we can waive them. They don't necessarily take into account that there may not be street parking available, they just simply say you can't require more than one space per unit. Someone can always put more in, but we cannot require it.
So you can require one space per unit, so if they, if a lot becomes essentially four units, they, they don't have to be, you know, driveway or parking spots, they, they can be on the street, right?
No, it has to be off-site, so, sorry, onsite parking, you can have on the street. So it basically is off-street parking, if there's four units in your example, there would need to be four off-street parking spaces available.
Okay, thank you.
And I would point out, not to be a downer on this, is that the state, again, in their wisdom, has said that if the lot is located within one-half mile walking distance of a corridor with a fixed route bus service, or two or more major bus routes, and we'll need to determine in terms of the headways whether we're subject to those provisions or not.
What was the, what was the, if, if you're within a quarter mile of the transportation hub or what have you, then what?
But yeah, the, the, this is under G I 1 and, and 2. It says the lot, so it's one off-street parking space, unless one of the following applies, the lot is located within one-half mile walking distance of either a corridor with fixed route bus service with service intervals no longer than 15 minutes during peak commute hours, or a site that contains the intersection of two or more major bus routes with a frequency of service of 15 minutes or less during the morning and afternoon peak commute periods. So we're, we're looking into that as well.
Okay, and then, you know, the ADUs keep coming up, they came up quite a bit in the Housing Element Workshop a couple of weeks ago, and I've been exploring the amnesty program that was in place about seven years ago. Ben, could you, or Janet, or someone advise, if we were to bring in and legalize or register, if you will, existing ADUs, does that count toward the 490?
Yes, indeed.
Okay.
And just to clarify, that amnesty provision is 10 years, so it's...
Well, it's not in the code right now, it's nowhere to be found.
Well, it is, if you look, it is, we did, we redid it in 2019, and we included the amnesty provisions again, so if it's missing in the code, that must be something to do with the people that print the code. But we redid the ADU and JADU code in 2019, and we included the amnesty provisions, which provide 10 years, so there's at least three more years left on it, and everybody only has to pay, everybody, for any ADU, JADU, including illegal ones, only half the fees, and we waived all penalties. So we need to, Janet, could you please check our code? And that's another thing that fell out.
Michelle, that, that doesn't meet at all with what you and I discussed, so there's definitely a discrepancy, and regardless, there's not broad awareness, and we can do a much better job of communicating and engaging the community on this, and probably look at sweetening the opportunity by further waiving fees, but we can talk about that another day. So can we just note that as a follow-up item, Michelle and Janet?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Renee, did you raise your hand?
Just a quick comment, I, I just want to, I feel like I'd be remiss not to just put this out there, and that obviously we would like to bring people in and legalize these units and count them to the arena, but people are already living in those places, which is great, but I just want to not lose sight of the fact that we're trying to increase stock, or within hopefully the built environment in order to house more people. So I, I'm always, I'm, I'm always looking at, you know, what's at, at the balance?
Right.
Many, but I hear you.
I hear your point, I also personally believe 490 is a large number, and if we can reduce that by a certain percentage.
No disagreement there.
All right.
And I would just say one follow-up item, at one time Ben gave me a list of the number of ADUs we've gotten, including which ones were legalized, and I would just say it would be a great thing to see that list updated and shared with all the council, and even the Planning Commission as well, because we do have some pretty good numbers, I can't remember what they were, but we did legalize, not hundreds, but quite a few, so that would be good. Are we ready for a motion, Mayor?
I certainly am.
Well, why don't I do it, because I kept track of the changes.
Oh, we so appreciate that.
So that's why I was, kept stopping us so we'd get to the right pages, so I'm going to go with the motion, waive reading, introduce and adopt by title only the urgency ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax, adding chapter 16.22, Urban Lot Splits, and chapter 17.049, Two-Unit Projects to the Town of Fairfax Town Code, and determining the ordinance to be exempt from CEQA, and this would be including the supplement with the, that was produced, and the following changes. On the 7th, whereas striking would threaten the character of existing neighborhoods, and adding and could negatively impact property values, and then in two places in the ordinance, changing the terminology to lumens to two-foot candles, and those are the changes.
I'll second that, although I'll just comment that I was looking up the lumens of the little 12-volt landscape lighting things that you stick in the ground, and they're pretty small lights, and they're, the ones I saw were 250 lumens, so I really think, I don't want to change it tonight, but...
Okay, well, we're going to two-foot candles.
But I'll second your motion.
Okay, we have motion caller second, Ackerman, Michelle, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cutrone.
Yes.
And Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay.
And with much appreciation to Janet and Ben and Kylie, fantastic job pulling this out in, in such a timely manner. Onward to the more permanent one, but this is a great start, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 16, we actually have some new information and need to continue this one, the appointment of the new town manager and approved employment agreement. We are going to adjourn or continue this to the December 15th meeting.
Mayor, I think we want to adjourn to a regular meeting on December 15th.
That's right.
We'll adjourn this meeting to February, to, this meeting will continue on that day, so it's...
Why don't we let Janet do it?
Janet can say what we need to do.
We're continuing this item, and we're continuing, adjourning and continuing this regular meeting to a regular meeting of December 15th, so that we can hear that one item.
I'll second Janet's motion, I'm just kidding.
Right then, any, I don't think we need to belabor that, I think we can move on to...
We need a motion, Janet?
No, we, that's how the mayor can continue it.
Okay.
Okay, a written report was provided in the packet on council reports and comments, does anyone have anything else to report?
No.
Okay. And the town manager, Adam, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and congratulations on your appointment, and to you as well, Vice Mayor Cutrone, and my deepest thanks to our immediate past president Ackerman for his leadership during my duration as your interim town manager, it's been a pleasure working closely with you, Mayor Ackerman, I just wanted to thank you for your leadership. Just three very quick updates here, and I think the public will be interested. Just three very quick updates here, and I think the public will be interested. Our Public Works recruitment director, Public Works Director Recruitment closes this Monday, December sixth, and we are again working with Ralph Anderson and Associates, who is leading our recruitment for the town manager, which is coming to, to an end here. We're a successful end, and hopefully we'll be able to report on this at our next meeting, as just discussed, why we're continuing the item to, to our December fifteenth meeting. But the Public Works Director position that our interim director, Goldman, is serving is, is obviously a critical position. So we're, we're working hard with our, with our recruiter to bring forward as many solid and qualified candidates as we possibly can. The other important recruitment that is underway is the shared services position with the climate action coordinator that we're sharing with the town of San Anselmo. And that position is actively being seeked and recruited for, and that closes on this Friday, December third. And currently, we have six very good candidates for that position, and so we'll be moving forward on that here in later this month. And then the third position, which I want to thank Councilmember Goddard for her leadership and support, and, and our community member, Dirty Timms, is the NRG coordinator that we're working on, and we hope to have that final brochure available by the end of the week, and post it early next week, and try to eat the bushes for some great candidates. It's a, it's a limited position in terms of what was budgeted for it, but nevertheless serves an important role in the community. So we'll be actively recruiting for, for that position here very shortly. And that ends my report. Obviously, a lot of activity here as we come to the end of the year, and want to thank the council and the staff for all their good and dedicated work for our community. So thank you. Happy answering questions of the council.
Any questions from the council?
Just a big thank you, as always, for your work.
Yes. Thank you so much, Adam. Okay, moving on to future agenda items, does anyone have anything they would like to add as a future topic?
Just something that I've been working on with our town clerk, and we hope unless things go awry, to bring in is a discussion of short-term rentals. Last the council discussed this was 2017. I have looked at some, you know, things have changed, and looked at some really good ones. And rather than bringing in ordinance forward, since only Renee and I were on the council at that time, and things have changed, we'd like to bring a discussion forward with parameters that we are suggesting for consideration. And so hopefully on December fifteenth, we'll be able to bring that discussion item forward, and then perhaps move on to looking at an ordinance. But anyway, just.
Is that going to be coupled with, I was, I was expecting the next steps to be a financial analysis and to come from finance as far as the opportunity.
Well, part of what we would do, and it's not really with finance, it's probably looking more, working with host compliance, is to get a better feel for how many, they have agreements with something like fifteen-plus different Airbnb, VRBO, et cetera, and they can give us a pretty good universe of what is out there. And then in the last report, we had an analysis of basically how many there are, and roughly an estimate of TOT. But it will be rough estimates, and I think what is more critical is for us to have really a discussion of those factors that we want to consider for our town. And there's been a lot of inroads since we discussed this in 2017. So there will be some small piece of that, but that's not going to be the big piece of it. I hope that's all right with you, Mayor.
Well, it's, it would, it constitutes tax revenue, which is why I think finance should be in scope and should be at the table and should be part of this project, right?
I don't think that's a problem, but I think we need to get a feel for how many are out there. The numbers are wrong from 2017.
Yeah.
And from there, we'll see how much we can get from host compliance on what they think the occupancy is, because finance can't tell us what the occupancy is.
Oh, absolutely. You need that data, but I think they should be at the table in terms of telling us whether the squeeze is worth the juice, or the juice is worth the squeeze, right? I mean, because that, that comes at a cost, right? That vendor relationship comes at a cost, and.
It's actually very inexpensive. San Rafael, for example, pays $25,000 a year. Mill Valley's paying about fifteen, so it's not a huge expenditure. But of course, that's all part of the picture, but everything is not going to be ironed out when that comes to us. It's more about what kinds of different considerations, and you should be aware, they're already here and they're operating illegally, so we might as well do a good job of trying to regulate things legally. Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Cutrone, did you have a question?
I just, I feel like we're starting to get into the very item that we have scheduled for the next meeting, so maybe we.
Well, I, I hear that, but I'd rather have it be as few agenda items as possible, right? So let, let's just put.
Well, I think, I just want to share with you, I've been talking to our interim town manager about this for a couple of months, and we had hoped to bring it tonight, which we weren't ready. And I think when we bring it, it will be a good item, and we can always decide that maybe we need more information, but I don't know how much we can get by then. So I agree with you, Chance, that we don't need to belabor it right now. I just wanted to give people a heads up.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, I had one more, which is one that came up during our council retreat. I had brought up the sort of seemingly easy win of following suit with Petaluma and doing a, a ban on new gas stations in Fairfax. And I think we had, we'd all agreed to put that somewhere on the list, and it's something that we have yet to take up. But just noting that we're, you know, a couple of months away from our next council retreat, I just figured, you know, put that to see where folks sat on that, on that issue, and if we could get that somewhere in the queue.
And Stephanie, I had one question. I don't have the forecast in front of me. Not sure why it didn't pop into my packet. Do we have a review of the design and permitting guidelines for the outdoor dining spaces on the agenda for next meeting?
For January.
Yes.
Not, not December fifteenth. Okay. All right, thank you. I just want to make sure that we're able to really get the word out in time for that, because I think.
January nineteenth is what it's slated for, and I don't know if Jonathan is, is on, and if he's still feeling confident about that date, but that's when we have it.
Okay, terrific. I, I misspoke with Jonathan today. I was thinking it was the fifteenth, so that's good. Gives us time. Thank you.
Yep. So I don't see the short-term Reynolds on this agenda forecast, so I, I don't know that we can commit to it, but we.
Um, I never got a forecast.
It's been published as part of the agenda for the last few months. It's.
I get a hard copy of the packet and it wasn't in there, so I didn't look for it.
It wasn't, wasn't in this packet, but it's been in the last few.
This is the town clerk speaking. There is, the agenda forecast is posted under the future items online, where it says agenda forecast, that's a link to it. And I apologize that I believe, Councilmember Kohler, I did not print it last week when I printed your packet. Sorry. I will email it to you.
You have a very full plate. We understand, Michelle, but just so you know, it's online at the very bottom of the agenda.
I'll just email it to you right now.
Yeah. Okay. Hearing nothing else?
I just didn't get any clarity from, I, I don't know if we have to have three council members agree that on the gas station thing, or I, I just don't know where that stands, or does that just get put in the queue? How does that work?
I would be fine with bringing it up if you need another person to agree. No urgency, but, yep.
I just know they're taking it up in San Anselmo, so I figured since we put it on our, our list of things at the retreat last year, maybe just keep it on there so it doesn't fall away.
And then actually, this speaks to probably the need to talk about this at our retreat in terms of how we actually do get something put into the.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we don't know that yet, but that's good. Well, we'll work that through.
Okay. So I'm happy to adjourn the meeting, and we are adjourning in memory of Larry Serpa, who was a Fairfax president and recently passed away.
And a very aquatic biologist-conservationist, kind of an amazing career, and his wife as well, who still lives in Fairfax. Thank you.
I see there is a member of the public with their hands raised. I don't know if we take public comment. Michelle, can you clarify?
Um, we, we don't usually take public comment after open time and after all the items have been commented on.
Okay.
We're, we're adjourning to December fifteenth. I don't know if you need to say that, but. However, Janet says we need to say it. Sorry.
Do you need to say anything else?
No, no, we, we said it the way we said. We are adjourning and continuing this regular meeting to an adjourned, continued regular meeting on December fifteenth, so that we can hear item sixteen.
And with that.
And with that, I wish you a very nice evening. See you on the fifteenth.
Thank you.